Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the August 5th, 2019 Town Council Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The first, the second item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Boy Scout Jimmy Crump. Jimmy.
.................................................................. Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is attendance. I see that all councilors are in attendance as well as Town Administrator Mayo and Clerk Dalton. Item number four on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, the minutes from the July 15th, 2019 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Counselor May. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And one abstention. So it was six, zero, one abstention, Dombrowski. Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is public engagement. I'll remind everyone that this is the opportunity for the public to speak before the Town Council. We will try to, because we have a rather packed house, we'll try to keep each person's comments to about three minutes. In my discretion, I can extend that time. We'll also allow for an opportunity for any councilors to ask questions or offer comments, but I do remind everyone that this is not an agenda item that would be voted on and so if there are issues that come up, certainly the Town Council could consider them on future agendas, but for purposes of tonight, it is strictly providing a public comment. So with that, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Yes, the first one is Julie Scott.
Ms. Scott, if you could please approach the table. Identify yourself and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Julie Scott. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I live at 226 Main Street here in Wakefield and I recently spoke during public participation to express appreciation for the work done by the bench committee. So as for agenda item 13 tonight, I ask that you consider the spirit of the concerns that led this council to start a committee to forge some sort of policy in this regard. The Lake Structure Committee presented a draft policy to this council on May 13th of this year. Amendments were made, the voting was unanimous, and the document passed and it now stands. I'm not sure that the policy with revisions has been posted on the town site, but I do have the original right here. I ask that you consider the spirit of the actions of the past year, those that led to this document and the unanimous adoption of this policy. The consideration of this policy when discussing item 13 tonight will be the first time that the policy would be utilized. Changes are being made to an item that falls within the jurisdiction of this policy. Tonight will determine how the council will handle future requests for alterations of structures contained within the document. When alterations are being made to any structures included within this policy, I personally hope you see to it that the document is referred to. When weighing the issues and concerns that civic groups and hundreds of citizens brought forward in multiple venues last year, I ask that you have realized that they were asking for more control. You all agreed that control was needed as was shown by each unanimous vote cast along the path leading to this final policy. In closing, when you discuss item 13 tonight, keep in mind the spirit surrounding the bench policy. Most important of all, if the policy is not going to be used to guide the council's thinking this evening, I would ask that the council address their reasoning behind such a decision. Volunteer committee members worked tirelessly and should be respected for their efforts. The volunteers deserve to hear your thinking if tonight you choose not to refer to the policy that you called upon them to create. Thank you all for all you do for the town.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions or comments. Do we have any further public participation?
Yes, the second one is Daniel Lieber.
Could you just say your name and address?
Certainly, Daniel Lieber, 1 Elm Street. Good to see all of you. Thank you very, very much for allowing public comment. First, I'd like to thank the council for publishing the, more of the packet online in advance of the meeting. It was through that that I was able to get additional insights into some of the items that are going to be on the agenda for discussion tonight. Greatly appreciate having that. It allowed some of the questions from the original posting to actually be answered. One of the items that was listed on that has to do with the potential acceptance of plaques from Wakefield Main Streets for the kiosks. I actually don't have any problems with having plaques that are on the, the structures provided that they were received from Wakefield Main Streets, but those plaques should be limited to Wakefield Main Streets itself as the, the actual, the actual structures were received from Wakefield Main Streets, not other vendors, other components. I also would recommend that you seek additional counsel, probably from Counsel Mullen, on having other components besides Wakefield Main Streets if you decide to have anyone else on the plaques because of the content itself and the prior comments that had been made regarding third-party content and other content on the plaques. Because the plaques are designed to be permanent, not temporary. So I just wanted to throw that out there again. Not opposed to having a thank you to Wakefield Main Streets, but I think that if, if it's anything beyond their, their name and logo, potentially, it introduces a series of issues around content that personally I find potentially very troubling and also I look at it and say it, it puts us into a content area that is not in the spirit of what the kiosks were originally designed for. Otherwise, I think, again, want to thank you for putting more information online. I think that that increase in transparency is greatly appreciated and laudable. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you. That case then will be moving on the agenda. And our next item is item number six. This is an Eagle Scout project that is going to be presented by Boy Scout Jimmy Crump. It's trail restoration of J.J. Round Park to Holland Road. So welcome, good evening.
My name is Jimmy Crump. I'm a senior at Wakefield High. Thank you for having me today. So basically for my Eagle Scout projects, I'm planning on restoring a trail from the J.J. Round parking lot to Holland Road, right off Oak Street. And why this project, I get that asked a lot. Boy Scouts and the outdoors are two really important things to me. I love to hike. When choosing a project, trail restoration came into mind immediately. This trail is in rough condition and I really want to add more hiking trails closer to Wakefield. I know Breakheart is a big place for our community to go to, but something downtown, able to walk to, basically from every part of town is what really I want to get into. So the current trail, it starts at the J.J. Round parking lot. It's roughly 1.75 miles long on the map that I mapped, goes right up to Holland Road about 100 feet from Oak Street. So the current conditions of the trail are relatively rough right now. Many sections of the trail are overgrown and have downfall blocking the path, like the left and right. Lots of washout and debris scattered the trail. So what I would like to accomplish, I'd like to rake the trail through thoroughly, dig into the trail, making it more defined, cut out all of the dead fall on the trail, and line the trail with the dead fall, making the trail more defined way. What happens in the fall is a leaf fall and you can't really see the trail and it's really hard to get off path. So using the natural occurring items like the dead fall to line the trail throughout the way is what I want to accomplish so you can hike the trail year-round without getting off the path. Also, I'll be adding a sign on both edges, both ends of the trail. At the J.J. Round parking lot will be the big sign, kind of like the kiosk down at the lake.
Oh, get away, don't use that. No, just joking. Inside council joke.
So with information on the sign with the trail map and where it ends and how long is it and just kind of history of it. And at the end of Holland Road, I'm planning on adding just a post with one of the hiker signs pointing to the trail because as you can tell, the dead fall is covering most of the trail entrance, so you can't really see it. So clearing out the area where the trail comes out on Holland Road, to add a small trail sign, put to the trail from the side of the road, just kind of advertise it from other ends of the trail, not just the J.J. Round side. So, that's it.
Great, well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any, anyone have any questions for Jimmy?
I'm sorry.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation and your, you know, your willingness to kind of take this on. You know, I would just say, you know, until I saw your presentation, it wasn't apparent to me that there actually was a trail going from the Round Park to, to Holland Road. So I look forward to seeing it cleaned up and I'm very supportive of what you're doing.
Vice Chair Santos?
As am I. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you stick around, you'll understand the joke. It's wonderful if we can add more trails around the beautiful parks we have in Wakefield and I think it's an excellent project for your Eagle Scout and will help just add to the town. So, good job.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
I just wonder, have you consulted with the DPW or any town?
Yeah, so right after I got the idea, I talked to Mr. Fazio and we walked the trail together, just tried to adjust and make, just to look at the whole trail from the start to the end, just to see what needs to be done and, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Counselor May?
Yeah, thank you. Jimmy, that was great presentation. Did Mr. Fazio, did he mention that it was a great idea as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if he doesn't have to do the work, right?
This is a good project. There's some really interesting wood back there. I haven't been back there in about thirty years and there's some really taper beans, still left for rock sides and stuff that's really hidden that people wouldn't even realize that they have. There's a nice panel of wood through there too, so. Last couple of projects were large scale with a lot of outside material and machinery and whatnot and this is kind of getting back to basics, just labor and utilize what's left and the opportunity to do some of that and everyone can look at some of the tracks.
Excellent, yeah, just want to say kudos to you. It's a great project, as everyone else mentioned, just adding to the town in a very positive way. Man, you're a bright young man and I think you're going places.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor By.
So just to echo, this is great. I was just telling folks I was hiking in Acadia this weekend, so I'm a big hiker and this will be great. As mentioned earlier during public comment, we do have a lake structure policy that Dennis was one of the committee members, as was I, and so I'd be interesting to see those signs and I don't think we can vote on them until we see them. So I'm for this project, I think it's great. I've actually never been back to the forest, I'd love to see this trial, but I don't think, right Steve, I'm looking at you, but according to...
I would ask that we bring the signs back first.
Yes, so I would hope that the signs aren't built until we approve them, but the trail...
There's just a sketch right now in my workbook, so...
Perfect, nope, that's great though, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions, Counsel? Jimmy, thank, thank you so much for this, this effort and we look forward to seeing the finished results. So please come back to us when you, when you do have those results. We are now, I will entertain a vote to approve the project as presented, excluding out the signs and that process, Jimmy, if you can provide to us with, you know, refined sketches so that we can, you know, look at them, put them out for public comment and then circle back on that. But for purposes of our voting tonight, my understanding is that we would be voting on this project sans signs for right now with the expectation you can come back on that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the, the motion that was made by Counselor Dinaco, seconded by Vice Chair Santos, is item number six, the Eagle Scout project, the trail restoration for J.J. Round Park to Holland Road as presented by Jimmy Crump. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing unanimous seven, zero vote, the vote passes. Congratulations and we look forward to seeing the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Watch out for those lady slippers.
Item number seven is licenses. This is, before us is a Class II license request for Modern Collision Center Incorporated. Good evening, if you could just identify yourselves for the record.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Brian McGrail, attorney at law, office is at 599 North Avenue in Wakefield. And Sasha, you can introduce yourself, your formal manager would...
Yes, Alexander Benchewski, work here in Wakefield, 57 U73, Modern Collision Center, believe in need of this just...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm representing Modern Collision Center Inc. relating to their application for a Class II motor vehicle license at the property known and numbered as 57-61 New Salem Street and specifically what we're requesting is a retail component to this license. Mr. Benchewski is the president of Modern Collision Inc. Modern Collision has been operating a successful auto body repair business at 57-61 New Salem Street in Wakefield since approximately 2003. They are respected and generous corporate citizen in the town of Wakefield. They service many Wakefield residents. As part of Modern Collision's business, Modern currently holds a Class II license that has been issued by this Town Council. However, that license is limited to wholesale transactions only and does not allow for retail to take place. Modern is requesting the issuance of a new license that would not be limited to wholesale transactions so as to allow for the display and consumer retail sales of motor vehicles at the site. This will allow Modern to buy, repair, and sell motor vehicles at 57-61 New Salem Street as a principal part of their business and as an integral part of their business plan. It will also be another service that they can provide to their customers, again, many of whom reside in the town of Wakefield. They have many repeat customers who sometimes and very often are looking for replacement motor vehicles when they're in accidents. Prior to appearing before the Town Council tonight, Modern has gone through proper procedures with the Wakefield Board of Appeals to allow for the display and retail sales of motor vehicles at 57-61 Salem Street. Specifically, in June of 2019, Modern was granted a special permit and site plan approval from the Board of Appeals allowing for the display and/or lease of motor vehicles at the property known as 57-61 New Salem Streets. In other words, a special permit allowing retail sales. That is a requirement of our zoning bylaw that in order to retail sale of motor vehicles that you need to obtain a special permit before the Board of Appeals or from the Board of Appeals and Modern has accomplished that. As part of our submittal, we have provided a copy of the Board of Appeals' special permit and site plan decision approval. Obviously, if this new license is granted with a retail component, my client will be surrendering his wholesale license which was recently issued. With all of that said, we respectfully request that you approve the request for the issuance of the Class II motor vehicle retail license allowing for the display and retail sales of motor vehicles at 57-61 New Salem Street. I will say there is plenty of spaces to display vehicles. My client has up to 16 parking spaces, I believe, that's discussed in the Board of Appeals' decision. The Board of Appeals has limited them to three, the display of no more than three vehicles on the site at any given time. That is a condition of the Board of Appeals' decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGrail. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McGrail or Mr. Benchewski? Counselor Chines?
Sorry, just a process and sequence question. So if I'm understanding correctly, your client applied for the wholesale license prior, knowing that you had to go through the, the permit process through the Board of Appeals to get the retail license, but the intent was always to get the retail license, or has this been a change in business for...
I would, I would classify it as a change in business. He's actually had a wholesale license issued by this council and prior to that, the Board of Selectmen going back for a number of years. Sherry was gracious enough to help me research that and we found it going back at least six years and it probably, according to my client, it goes back much further than that.
Okay.
They just want to add this component to their business because right now what happens is if they have vehicles, they can't sell them to consumers, they can only sell them to other dealers as wholesalers.
Thank you. Counselor May?
Yeah, I just want to concur that I think that there's no reason we shouldn't give you a retail license. I, I've known Sasha for many years, does an excellent job, he works with many different towns, not just our town. He has so many people, repeat customers, as Brian said. He does a wonderful job, just like you. So I think there'll be, be no reason we should say no to retail, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further comments or questions? I guess one point of clarification, I know you mentioned the display of up to three vehicles for sale. I know when we've had similar requests before us, one of the concerns that this body has had is what that looks like in terms of advertising, in terms of, you know, signs on vehicles, flags, banners, balloons and the like, in terms of changing the character of, of the area. Can you speak to that and what sorts of commitments your client is willing to make relative to making sure that it's, any sales are maintained in a, in a presentable way versus, I'll say, a tacky, a tacky way, for lack of a better term?
Yeah, so I think I can. His, his building is part of the restaurant building, which is, I don't know if it still goes by Chuck Wagon, but the former Chuck Wagon site and he, he occupies kind of the side of the building going up. So there's parking spaces in front on New Salem Street associated with the restaurant that he has no right to use under his lease. His lease is limited to spaces along the side of the building on both aisles. He also has parking, or I should say vehicle storage available in the back of his building for some of the more damaged cars that come in, so he has plenty of space. And the zoning Board of Appeals was concerned with this, with that exact issue. So they actually designated kind of an area where that, where the display would take place and it's actually on the side of the building, nowhere out front. There is a requirement through the Registry of Motor Vehicles to get the, the proper plate from them that you have to actually be displaying and have to have designated spaces. So you're not planning on having banners out there, balloons, or you're not trying to really, I don't think there's any goal of kind of calling attention to it. The goal is to have the cars available for sale and honestly, a lot of these sales now are done over the internet. The people will find them online and they'll see them, but there is no desire to have like signs out on New Salem Street trying to call attention to what's happening further back on the lot. Is that correct, Sasha?
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? So with that then, item number seven is, requires a vote asking for a Class II license for Modern Collision Center. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Dinaco, open up to discussion of this body. Seeing no discussion, the motion on the floor is the issuance of a Class II license request for Modern Collision Centers as described by Mr. McGrail's presentation. All those members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries seven, zero. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on now to item number eight, it's water street easement and parking space improvement. I believe, Mr. McGrail, you'll be presenting with your client this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Dave Williams with SSG Development, 129 South Street, Boston, Mass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Attorney Brian McGrail representing SSG Water Valley Wakefield LLC relating to their construction of a self-storage warehouse establishment at property known and numbered as 205-209 Water Street in Wakefield. As you just heard, Mr. Williams is here on behalf of SSG. The Wakefield Board of Appeals granted a special permit and site plan approval allowing a self-storage warehouse establishment at the subject property, 205-209 Water Street. The project is nearing, it's under construction and nearing completion. As part of our submittal package, we provided a copy of the Board of Appeals' special permit and site plan approval decision and we also provided a copy of sheet SP1 of the final project plans that are referenced in the decision. In the Board of Appeals' decision is condition number two, which we referred to, that involves consideration indoor approval by the Wakefield Town Council, which brings us here tonight. Specifically, condition number two states, quote, "The applicant shall provide the three parking spaces on Valley Street as shown on the final project plans only if allowed to do so by the appropriate town of Wakefield officials and/or boards. If allowed to do so by the appropriate town of Wakefield officials and/or boards, the applicant shall be responsible for the cost of constructing and installing the same." During the hearing process before the Board of Appeals on this project, there was some significant input from some of the neighbors and local abutting business owner, which really led to this condition and was considered by the board. The Board of Appeals saw an opportunity after that testimony to, an opportunity to create three additional public parking spaces in a safe sidewalk along Valley Street, kind of near the intersection of Water Street, which resulted in condition number two, which again brings us before your council tonight. Since SSG has little or no use for this area on its property, they were happy to accommodate the request and accept the Board of Appeals' condition number two. Some background on this condition. During a site visit and through testimony, it was discovered that in that area, people were parking on Valley Street, but they were parking up over the curbing in that area. So their vehicle would kind of be half on the curb and half on the street and it's somewhat of a narrow area as it gets close to Water Street and, you know, folks and Board of Appeals members said, geez, what can we do to improve that? Interestingly, that area really has nothing to do with the function or operation of the self-storage facility. The self-storage facility's parking lot is access from Water Street past Showmar, so it's quite a ways from there and there's no access that is going to be utilized off of Valley Street for the property. So that area is somewhat dead land for SSG. They really don't have a lot of use to it, use for it, I should say. So as cars were parking up on the sidewalk, they're blocking pedestrians, they can't get by, it created somewhat of a hazardous situation. What was redesigned is SSG voluntarily giving up a portion of their land through an easement to the town and during their construction, to construct three parking spaces, a little bit of which will be on the town right of way, but the majority of which will be on SSG's property and then beyond that, closer to their, to their property, a five-foot sidewalk that would hug the property and be safe off, off of the street. The parking spaces are 12 by 22, parallel parking, as I've mentioned, were able to fit a total of three. And that's what the condition calls for, for SSG to agree to do that, to agree to offer it to the town. The only one that can accept that as a contribution is your council and then an easement will be given to the town for the public parking spaces and for the use of the sidewalk. Again, your council is the only one that can accept the easement. So on behalf of SSG, David is happy to do this and construction is, as I've mentioned, is very close to completion. They've kind of prepped this area to be able to accommodate this, assuming that your board would be, I'm sorry, your council would be willing to accept this. I think it's important to note that all of the work involved here, the construction, SSG is paying for it. It's just part of their construction, they just built it in. So the construction of these parking spaces, the relocation of the curbing, the construction of the sidewalk, it's not costing the town anything. It would be privately paid and constructed by SSG in conjunction with the construction of their project. So that's what we're requesting. We're requesting that the board allow and accept the infrastructure work, parking spaces and sidewalk as a contribution to the town and that the Town Council also accept an easement to provide public access to those parking spaces that would then be in your control as public parking spaces and access to the public of the sidewalk. I drafted the easement, I've worked, worked through the verbiage with Town Council, Tom Mullen. Tom is not here tonight, but he has confirmed that the language of the easement is drafted is acceptable to him on behalf of the legal department.
Thank you, Mr. McGrail. Questions, comments?
Brian, can you, can you tell us that the neighbors are happy with the proposed sidewalk and parking spaces?
Yes, I mean, it was a public hearing, the, the folks that were really, I think are going to benefit the most and really lobbied for this idea was the owner of Showmar.
That's correct.
Because, you know, a lot of times, you know, people would be parking there, it creates a problem for his business and this will actually be...
a problem for his business, and this will actually be public parking spaces that will probably get some of the cars off of Water Street that, that allow them to safely park in that area and walk around the corner and go into his store.
In the abutters, the Valley Street folks didn't seem to have an issue with it.
Yeah. No. We worked very closely, Dave worked very closely with most of the abutters, and the main abutter in the back, we have a great relationship with.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
I think similar to Counselor Santos, has the Traffic Advisory Committee reviewed this?
Well, I know it was sent, you know, this submittal was part of our proposal that was sent through DPW. We didn't appear directly before the Traffic Advisory Committee on this.
I guess, I guess that's a process question. Does that need to go through there? And my question is because there is, our police department is on the Traffic Advisory Committee, and I would wonder what their input would be.
I can answer that?
Please.
The Traffic Advisory does weigh in on projects before the zoning board when we're requested to, or when that is requested to. On this case, no, we weren't, nor do I think it was probably necessary to. I know the DPW is happy with it, the neighborhood was happy with it, the ZBA was happy with it, so there was no request, there was no hearing at the Traffic Advisory on this issue.
Further questions, comments? Counselor, bye.
Just to follow up on Counselor Santos's question, when was the public hearing that you talked about?
Oh, for the zoning board?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think in December of 17.
Let me give you an exact, back in 2017 was when the special permit was given, but the project had been gone through other.
So the neighbors haven't been notified about these three parking spots?
No, that was part of what we agreed to do with our approval process with the Board of Appeals.
In December of 2017.
Yes, that's as part of that.
Okay. So neighbors haven't been updated since?
No. I mean, with all, with all due respect, I don't know what opposition any neighbor would have, because this is parking spaces that are actually taking place on our property that people can park on. They're going to be public, so I think any neighbor would look at this. I mean, right now, they're parking up over the curb and blocking access, so if neighbors at night have visitors, they can use them. This is not for the benefit of this project. This was, this was requested of my client as a, you know, being a good citizen, as an accommodation for a town is kind of like an opportunity to provide something that could benefit the public, and they agreed to do it. The cost to them, they're paying for it, I don't mean to de-minimize it, but it wasn't extensive because they're under construction anyways. There certainly is a cost of relocating the curbing. So I'm all for public process, I mean, whatever the council decides to do, I just don't see it as a major issue on this specific matter. But that's up to you to decide.
Counselor Dinoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McGrell. Thank you very much for your presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. The shadowed area that, on the map that we have, is that the entire sidewalk area that exists now? Or is that the property line? I'm just trying to get a bearing between where Valley Street, where it's coming down Valley Street, and where Melvin Street would be coming into the intersection.
That's further down. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a, this is a sketch that goes with the easement that I've been working on with Tom Mullen, it would be attached, and I can, if I could pass this out, I might get into Mr. Dinoco's question.
Please.
To give you a, because this shows you, Paul, with the intersection of Melvin Street here, Tennessee is a point.
There was no sidewalk from Shomar at the corner.
Correct. But I'm more interested in the property line as to how we're establishing the three parking spaces plus the new sidewalk that you're putting in.
Paul, that's Melvin Street coming in, if you bear in mind.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. They're putting it into their own property, that's what we need.
Right.
Right. So this only goes to address a concern that I had when I talked to Brian on this earlier, was the, is the T or the J actually stopped that's on the end of Melvin as it hits Valley Street? So I was just curious of how that would interact with the proposed sidewalk, but after seeing this map, it's all on their property. So they're pushing in off the curb, the current curb, and they're putting in three parking spaces and an additional sidewalk on their own property, and it has nothing to do with the Valley Street right of way. So I just want to make sure it wasn't impeding the flow of traffic in any way by them putting in three additional parking lots, and it doesn't. So it addresses my question, so thank you very much.
I know we have a lot of people watching at home, so they don't have the benefit of this, but so just so we're clear, this is in essence a cut-in of 917 square feet onto your private property.
That's correct.
That is going to be used for this, call it public purpose, in essence. Is that a fair characterization of that?
It is. And a small portion of that cut-in is town land, very small, the majority of it is on my client's property. And an easement will be given to the town to use that for parking and sidewalk.
Counselor May.
Not that parking's ever been a problem in Wakefield. It's kind of a joke. Getting three new spots is fabulous. I think I appreciate it, I think the whole council appreciates it, if I could say that. And getting three spots is like gold, you know, finding a gold nugget on that roadway. So I embrace this, I think it's fabulous, and I thank you very much for offering this great goodwill gesture, so I'm all for it. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for item eight, which is the water street easement and parking space improvement as described by Mr. McGrell, SSG Water Valley Wakefield LLC located at 205-209 Water Street, after there having been granted a special permit and site plan approval from the Board of, Wakefield Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor May, seconded by Vice Chair Santos. Is there any discussion?
Counselor Dinoco.
Do we need two votes on this, Steve? Is it because of the document?
No, I think one.
One vote will be, okay, that's fine. I just want clarification. Thank you.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
And another just clarification, and I admit I was a bit confused on this, this is public parking, this is not, okay. Can that be added to the motion, just so it's clear that it's public parking? Okay.
You're looking to amend the motion?
I would like to just amend it to add the word "public."
Sure. All right, so second for them?
Second.
All right, so amended by Counselor Smith-Galvin, seconded by Counselor Chines. So now the motion before this body, as amended, is the water street easement and parking space improvement creating public parking on the property located at 205 to 209 Water Streets. Any discussion with that, following that amendment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing a unanimous vote of seven zero, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks for three more spots.
The next item on the agenda is item number nine. This is constituent issues. I'll remind counselors that this is the opportunity to present briefly a report of any issues that you've heard from residents within town. These are not items that are currently on the agenda. If there is an indication that they're warranted as agenda items, they will appear on a future agenda. So with that said, does anyone have any constituent issues that they'd like to raise before the council tonight? Counselor May.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much for calling on me. Okay, I do have a couple. Two residents called on requests for resident stickers, parking stickers. So right now, these folks live down Albion past St. Joseph's, so kind of out of the Main Street downtown, you know, Chestnut area. So I think that right now, we don't have resident stickers for Albion Street down that far, so over North Ave, going towards Stonem. So I wondered if, seems legit, we're trying to help people from getting those streets clogged from trains and buses, and so I told them, filled them, I'd bring it up tonight. So again, resident stickers for Albion Street, past, you know, go over North Ave, going towards Stonem. And the other request is for constituents, mostly the west side, they're very upset about the buildings going up, as they said, "Helter skelter," I think was the comments. So there's so much building, they're asking for the ZBA to change their ways and not just have a rubber stamp approval process. The traffic's getting backed up everywhere, especially on the west side, and there's a lot of reasons, but I said it passed along. So again, they feel the buildings going out, apartments, condos, everything, we're just rubber stamping and passing everything. That's it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
I think, Counselor May, on your first point, that sounds like something that would be, that should be delegated to the Traffic Advisory Committee to look at, and that's something that I'll.
Coming up in August, I think we can.
Right.
Maybe the 23rd.
So, Mr. Mayo, if that's something that you could follow up on with Traffic Advisory to make sure that makes their agenda, I think we can address that issue.
Excellent point. 23rd, let's try to do with that.
As far as the ZBA, I think that's probably part of a broader discussion. I think that's, is something that we could consider having the ZBA, as we are with other bodies. Obviously, the ZBA has independent authority granted by the state. Nonetheless, having them come and reporting to us at a very future meeting, I think, makes a lot of practical sense, so we can make sure that we have a smart approach to how we're looking at development projects and things of that.
Excellent. That would make them very happy.
Counselor Dinoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, since the parking enforcement has begun, there have been several of the business owners, mostly female, that are complaining about the issue of walking to the remote areas designated by the parking late at night. So I've asked them to, in turn, not to contact directly, but I needed in writing directed towards the town administrator for the entire board, and they're willing to do that. So they have a concern of their safety when they're walking from the far end of, say, Albion Street to either the Commons or to the Water Street lot because of the distance late at night. So there's a safety issue that they're concerned on, and they're trying to seek that there's a way of addressing the parking at that end of Albion or maybe not Ave, to afford them possible longer-term parking so that they don't have to venture that far. So I did address, have them address any correspondence to Mr. Mayo, because I always tell them that there's more power in a written letter than there is in a phone call. So I said, please write the letter, address your concern, sign it, and submit it to Mr. Mayo in our care for us to review, but that's something that they're concerned of right now. So they make, hopefully that they will follow through and put their pen to paper.
As we've talked about, the parking enforcement and the areas, it's a dynamic process, and so I think that, that input is very important, and will help us to be able to revisit areas and see if shifts are appropriate, and if so, where. So, all right, so we'll await that, then, Mr. Mayo, then you'll obviously pass it on to us. Any other? Counselor Chines.
Thanks. So I just wanted to raise an issue that I've heard a lot of, or I guess re-raise an issue that I've heard a lot of feedback about. You know, two meetings ago, we voted on the Commons Street one-way issue, and I bring this up not to revisit that decision, I'm not interested in doing that, but just to say that I've heard from probably close to a dozen people that have expressed concerns about the process that we followed, and a perception that a process that has been laid out through the Envision project was sort of short-circuited on that decision. I want to mention it here because I think as a community, we've actually done a good job through Envision of getting the community involved, having open meetings, having people come in and be part of that vision, and I think it would be unfortunate as a town council if we make sort of unforced errors that undermine that perception. And so I bring the issue up just in the hopes that, you know, as, as future issues come up, as future recommendations, whether they're from the Traffic Advisory Committee or other parts of the town come up related to things that are related to Envision, that we just make sure we give those the due process, give people the chance to weigh in, so we don't undermine, I think, a lot of goodwill that we've tried to build up through Envision.
Thank you very much. Counselor Chines?
Thanks.
Any other constituent issues? All right, then. So moving on to item number 10, Chairman's comments, there were just a few points that I wanted to update everyone on. The first of which relates to a recent meeting of the Finance Committee, it was actually back on June 27th. Mr. Mayo and I attended, as did Town Council, Council Mullen. A FinCom member, Peter McManama, presented a PowerPoint where he had suggested the idea of flipping the way that we handle budgeting in town. And in essence, it would, it was a contemplated idea that the Finance Committee would first offer up a budget and approve budgets, and then they would come to Town Council, and that would be basically the reverse of how we currently do things within the town. We had a very good discussion. Town Council Mullen was very informative in advising the FinCom that that sort of a change would require changes both to the town charter and to the town bylaws. And with that in mind, I suggested to the Finance Committee that there was interest from several members on this body that we revisit the way we approach budgets and, and look at that process in a different way. Mr. Mayo and I have had discussions about this over the last several months about how we can do that differently, how we can improve that process. I would say that one of the biggest takeaways from that meeting is, is the idea of starting the process sooner. I suggested that we have a tribe board meeting at the beginning of the budget process, meaning the school committee, Town Council, and Finance Committee. Finance Committee was very receptive to that idea. And I think that is one way so that we can all be on the same page, because while we have somewhat parallel budgeting processes, ultimately, it's the same tax dollars we're talking about, pulled together. In addition, bringing in Finance Committee liaisons into the budgeting process early on and having them participating at Town Council meetings was another suggestion that I offered up to them to try to address some of the issues that they had raised, and I think there was, that was a welcome change as well. And Finance Committee also made it clear they wanted to be more involved with contract negotiations, and we talked a lot about that, especially when we're looking at the various contracts with the school department. And that's something that the Finance Committee is interested in, in having a more of a role in. And we talked about the idea of even the creation of a contract negotiation subcommittee as one thing that could be explored, in addition to liaisons that would come here to the Town Council meetings. So I think it's, it's a way that we're able to connect the dots as a town in a way that we probably aren't doing to the best of our abilities just yet. The way, it's very preliminary right now, again, with the exception of understanding we'll form that, that we'll set that tribe board meeting date probably very soon. And I think the general consensus was this was a good path going forward, understanding there's a lot of detail still to be filled in, and certainly, this body, you know, is an important, you know, voice in all of that. Chairman Dan Sherman from Finance Committee will be drafting a memo in this regard to just kind of talk about some of what came out of their meeting and suggestions that he has. I also know that Mr. Mayo is meeting with Finance Committee and the School Department on the school budget next week, so we're trying to be ahead of the, ahead of the process in prior years. And again, FinCom's involvement with the negotiations for the schools, I think, will be of benefit in general, and the FinCom liaisons being more actively involved in the department budgeting process, I think, is another improvement that we can be making. So that's just a glimpse of what we're looking, looking at, just at the macro level, there's a lot of backfilling, and I really want to have a lot of input from this council as well in terms of the specifics that will get us there. But I think that we're on, on the right path to make sure that we have a better, a better budgeting process going forward. The, I want to just make the community aware that there has been a lot of discussion about individuals in the downtown, and that has been an ongoing concern that some people have raised, and when I say concern, not necessarily a negative connotation, but it is, it is something that, as a community, we need to do a better job of addressing. There are different perspectives on how to address individuals who are consistently in the downtown, either intoxicated, asking for money, or otherwise making some people feel uncomfortable. I know a lot of business owners have approached Town Hall with concerns about that. I was there actually one day when a business owner came in about that, and I know that members of this body have already begun discussions on this. It seems like it'll be a multi-pronged approach. There's a social services component, that's a huge component to this. There is a police, law enforcement component that is also important, too. I know that there was, you know, Chief Skory indicated a few weeks back that, you know, the. someone had an open container, for example. So, it's something that is not for discussion tonight. It's something that I expect will be on the agenda for the next meeting when we'll have Chief Scory here, as well as our social worker that we share with Elliot. But it's an issue that we have to address, and it's an issue that we have to be able to help people, but also make sure that business owners feel comfortable. I know a number of business owners have been concerned about folks coming into their businesses during the day, asking for money, making them feel uncomfortable and intimidated. So, there's a careful balance that's going on here, and I'm fully cognizant of that. But we have to figure out how we can best make sure that individuals that are in the downtown, you know, have their needs addressed, but at the same time, the business owners and the visitors to downtown, you know, are felt, you know, feel comfortable and safe as well. So, I think that that's going to be a multi-pronged approach and one that I look forward to us talking about further at the next meeting. But there has been so much discussion, and so many people have raised the issue, I wanted to make sure that the community knew that it's on the radar moving forward. The next issue that I wanted to briefly touch upon was information available to the public. I know there had been one reference in the local newspaper that our meeting packets, these materials that we get before each meeting, had not been provided for several meetings. I followed up with our clerk on this because I thought it was an important issue to explore. She laid out for me a spreadsheet of, I think it was five years' worth of dates and times that she had released information, either as, you know, just as a courtesy or on request. In going through that, it does appear that there were several times where packets were not released to the press. And I recognize that that's something that we have to make sure we do. So, a few months back, when I came into this role, I wanted to expand the agenda so it was more understandable for people. It was more detailed so people would know exactly what it is that we'd be discussing here, and there'd be context for it. So, the next logical step, as I explained to my counselors previously, is expanding the information flow. So, the packets that we have now as Town Councilors are now available to the general public, and they will be released within hours of being released to the Town Councilors. So, for the most part, the packet release happens the Thursday before a Monday meeting, and that will be a standard operating procedure going forward. So, it won't be a question of, has someone received the packet? If you want the information, it's going to be out there. I think it makes a lot of practical sense. Our packets, I think this packet might be something like 78 pages long or thereabouts. There's a lot of material and information. Those of you who are watching these meetings and want to follow along at home, you have the information. We've been bookmarking all the different items so you can really go through and just follow along all the materials we have. But it's, you know, information flow is always a work in progress, and this continues to be. But I do want to thank our clerk for compiling all the information so I had a better understanding of all the information that had been, you know, distributed. And, you know, if we get things right nine times out of 10, that's good, but, you know, we're shooting for 10 out of 10. So, that's what we hope to do here with this information flow. But I know we had someone in public engagement mention that this was an improvement, and he understood the context of what we're going to be talking about tonight. That's what we're looking to do. We're looking to be able to get the information out there, push it out there for anyone that's interested. It'll always be on the Town Council page on our website, and I know for this meeting, we even posted it on the main homepage as well. So, again, by late Thursday afternoon, you can expect that information available for public consumption, and I think that's going to be a positive step forward. And finally, I wanted to announce our next meeting, which is on Monday, September 9th, 2019. I have been in discussions the last few weeks with Mr. Mayo about this, and our next meeting on September 9th, 2019, will actually be on the Lower Common. We're going to be, it'll be outside. It'll be on the Lower Common, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to get out into town. I'm hoping that it'll generate some interest. I'm hoping that it'll draw some additional folks to come to the meeting, and I think it's a really unique opportunity. I'm not aware of, I've asked around, I'm not aware of a Town Council or Board of Select proceeding. Having a meeting, you know, on the Common, I think it's a very unique opportunity for us, and we'll have certainly a lot of focus on lake opportunities as well as a part of that meeting. But I do invite everyone to come out to the Common. It will be a 6:30 start because we'll be dealing with the sun setting, but rest assured, we'll have lighting as well. But I think it's a really unique opportunity to get us out of the studio, to get us, you know, out in the middle of town, and hopefully, we'll have a lot of public interest with that. So, that's all I have on the Chairman's comments side. If anyone has any questions or comments.
Just.
Counselor Chines. Yes.
Can you speak a little bit more about the September 9th meeting, just logistically? You know, is there a rain date? You know, who we talked about if we're doing kind of equipment and lighting outside, what the cost is to the town?
Yeah, sure.
I like the idea of, obviously, being out in the community, but, you know, that also brings certain challenges to it as well.
I mean, I think it brings certain opportunities. I've spoken with Mr. Mayo about that, and most of the equipment is actually going to be able to come, be coming through the school, and we're working with DPW and WCAT on that piece. If we do have inclement weather, then it will likely need to be moved inside, and we would give advance notice. We'd make that call well in advance. So, when we post for that meeting, it's a 48-hour requirement for that, we will post the location and the rain location for that, basically. So, if that is the case, then yes. And we have a logistics meeting, I think, coming up mid-month on that.
And so, with sort of the logistics being organized by town departments, again, is there additional costs that we're incurring as a community relative to having our meetings here?
I don't believe so. I mean, WCAT would be setting up the same way it would set up, say, like the Grand March, for example, or some of the other events that they set up for. Like, when we had the meeting with the school committee, for example, WCAT set up there. DPW would be setting up some risers for us, for example. I think it's.
I see minimal costs.
Yeah. Deminus.
I think it would be helpful just to understand that. I think, again, just so that we can show that we're being prudent stewards of the town's funds with this.
No, so, of course, and that's why, you know, we've been speaking for some time, Mr. Mayo and I have been speaking for some time, about the ways in which we can do that. I don't know who's cheaper, either Mr. Mayo or me, but between the two of us, we.
You are.
But between the two of us, we, that was certainly a part of the discussion going on.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, moving on then to the next item, which is item number 11. This is the DPW Director appointment. So, that the community knows, the way that our government is structured, our Town Administrator is in the position to select and recommend the DPW Director subject to a vote of the Town Council. So, with that, I would ask Mr. Mayo if you could offer up your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am very pleased to be here tonight and to recommend Joe Conway as our Director of, new Director of Public Works. And I think you can see out here in our audience, we have many, many members of the DPW here in support of this appointment, as well as, I thought I saw, maybe some police officers there as well in support, and some citizens. And I do have Amy Forziati here, our HR Director, in case there are any questions for her about the process. She did a great job, as did the committee. I'll get to that in a second. Joe Conway is a Wakefield High graduate, year 2003, kind of bothers me to say that, has a bachelor's degree from Salem State. He's graduate certified at Suffolk, which is on local government through an MMA program, and I did have the ability to talk to Joe a lot about that. He just did that here, and he's a candidate for his Master's in Business Administration at UMass. Joe holds numerous certificates, whether it's FEMA certified, snow removal programs, a lot of these designations along the way. He has been working in our Department of Public Works since November of 2007, and I think Joe has done almost every job himself in the department. He knows the town. He knows the workers. His customer service and his demeanor with the customers, I think, is sterling. In fact, I think in your packet, there was a very lovely email from somebody who has been in front of this board moving the project forward, who really enjoyed working with Joe and felt really good after coming in to get their kickoff meeting, which made me feel good to get that email. To talk a little bit about the process, Amy Forziati, I asked her to spearhead this as our Director of Human Resources. There was a nine-member committee made up of six members of our staff and three members of the public. And that committee looked at 20 resumes. They narrowed it down to 12 interviews, five finalists, and then four sent back to me for final interviews with Amy and myself. And I had a very long talk with all of them, and I really enjoyed the process through that. But as I said in the beginning when we're going through this, that I thought, and I think, and I know, that the best person for this job for the town of Wakefield and taking us forward is Joe Conway. I've enjoyed working with him. I think that there's, I think almost every one of his supervisors is here today in support of him, as are other members of the staff there. And I'm anxious and happy to answer any questions that you have, but I do request that the council approve my appointment of him under Section 5-2C of the Town Charter. I think Joe does have a few words to say, Mr. Chairman, and then we're all available for questions.
Good evening.
I know you have a fully loaded program tonight, so I'll be brief with this, but I just thought, being able to sit here in front of you all, it was important to acknowledge a couple of people that have helped kind of get me to this point in tonight. So, quickly, I just want to thank Administrator Mayo, members of the Town Council. I appreciate the support that everyone's given me to get me here today. I serve with great pride, and I continue to look to serve with great pride in leading this next chapter for Public Works. I'd also like to thank Human Resources Director Amy Forziati and the Selection Committee. They put a lot of tremendous time and effort into things. I can't imagine the task that it was to take all the candidates and develop it into lists and then break them down further and further and further. I really enjoyed working with them. Their questions were tough. They were very interactive, and it was nice being able to talk and share some of my experiences and their thoughts along the way. Public Works touches every part of life. From the moment you wake up to the moment you go to sleep, Public Works is there. There are many moving parts to our day-to-day operation, taking effort from every individual simultaneously. Public Works always has and always will work together and succeed as a team. Thank you to my Public Works management team. Steve Fitzpatrick, Dennis Fazio, Don Schneider, Dennis Gorman, Bill Renaud, Christopher Pierce, and Claire Moss. Thank you for your support, professionalism, and can-do attitude. This group manages to make the difficult happen with regularity and the impossible happen with just a little bit more added time. Members of the labor team and clerical union, Public Works is all about the people. These are the faces of Public Works behind me that have come with me tonight. The men and women sitting here with me today are your face of Public Works. They're committed problem solvers who take pride in their work and give 100% in their day-to-day to positively impact your community. Due to their dedication, Public Works can make it happen. And last but certainly not least, I'd like to just quickly mention Director, previous Director Rick Stinson. As Steve had mentioned, I began my full-time career with Public Works over 12 years ago as an entry-level laborer. Through the years, I would often seek Rick out to talk about growth and making impactful moves in my career track. Rick always took the time to listen to me and offer me advice when I had questions for him. Thank you, Rick, for allowing me to chart my own course, grow as a professional, and for mentoring me through the years. I would also like to say thank you for not throwing me out of your office when I wasn't taking no for an answer. You've left the team with a great foundation for the future, and I look forward to continuing the mission.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Conway. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Santos?
I know that there were several qualified candidates, and I spoke with members of the committee during the whole process, and it was very, very clear as it went on that Joe had everything and was turning out to be the strongest candidate. I think your experience in management, but working from the ground up, I'm always impressed at how thoughtful and respectful you are dealing with customers, and I've seen some customers who weren't always respectful on the other side, and you keep your cool and you keep your professionalism. I've never seen that falter, which I think is wonderful for one of our leaders. You're bringing institutional knowledge, and for me, that's, coming from the ground up is very important, but also, being a Wakefield boy is a bonus to me. It's not necessary. Some people, I would hope they wouldn't think it was a distraction, but for me, you are vested in this community. You have everything else, and you're a Wakefield boy. And you're, the quality of your character, knowing Chickie, and why isn't she here? Is she watching at home?
I'm sure they're watching.
All right. Well, Chickie, your mother is a phenomenal person who's my children through the Woodville School worked with, but just knowing her character and knowing that that fell to you and your dad, I think that's so important, and I know Steve values that. We want our people to be of that caliber. I think, finally, that, you know, several years ago, we wanted to really develop good folks within our department, to rise, to take the reins, to be vested, and when you were the strongest candidate, to promote you from within. It's not always going to happen. It happened with you, and I think we see that happening. It happened with Chief Scory as well. This was not something that was done casually. This is something that the council's been working on for several years. So, Joe, I'm thrilled and can't wait to work with you, so, well done.
Thank you. Likewise.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Chines.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Crowley. I, you know, have had the good fortune of working with you a little bit over the last couple of years, both on the Finance Committee and now in the council, and certainly know the skill that you bring. And I want to echo Counselor Santos's comment on your diplomacy as well. You know, I've seen you handle a lot of not very easy situations with tact, with professionalism, and I think with a level of empathy, you know, that folks in town appreciate when they're having a difficult issue with the DPW. So, I look forward to continuing to work with you and, you know, certainly wish you the best as you take this on. I do just want to also sort of highlight, Mr. Mayo, appreciate the process that went into this. I know a number of us have talked about sort of process when it comes to hiring a job as important as the DPW Director, and really want to recognize, you know, Steve, the work that, you know, you did in sort of setting the committee together, Amy Forziati, the work that she put in place as well. You know, we can always be confident when we've got the right process that there's a great chance that we've got the right person, and we had a good process in this case. So, I think that reflects well on you, Mr. Crowley, and again, look forward to working with you.
Thank you. That committee worked very hard.
Absolutely.
Spent a lot of time and their personal time, and I do appreciate that.
No, but certainly, I want to make sure they understand how much their work is recognized as well, because as any of us who've hired people in any stage in our life, it's not easy to hire, again, folks especially for a job as important as this. So, thank you.
Counselor Dinoco.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a pleasure working with you over those past 12 years because we've both been together in and out of that office many times, discussing multiple items, whether it be the river next to my house, along with Mr. Fazio, or whether it be someone's complaining about water bills or whatever. But you've handled yourself professionally all along. I mean, it's a great opportunity to have you now step into Rick's position, and I think that you'll carry us through over the next, you know, several years, doing a fabulous job for us. And I do have to give credit to Mr. Mayo and the committee that was established and led by Amy. They did a great job. I bumped into them a couple of times while they were going through the process, and it was a long process for them, so I think we made the right decision, though.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor McGalvin.
I just really want to echo what everybody else has said. I've worked with you a little bit already in Environmental Sustainability Committee, been very impressed. I'm mostly impressed by your colleagues that are here, standing with you, supporting you. Thank you all for coming. And Steve, again, really thank you so much. I know a number of us raised the issue of the process, and I think that this really shows that we got the right person, and we're hitting the ground running, having had an open process. So, thank you.
Counselor.
And just to echo what everyone said, congratulations. It is a true testament to have everyone behind you. I just want to, and also, Steve, the process is great. I really appreciate the memo. What I'm really excited about, Joe, is working on you when you talk about you are looking forward to better and enhanced communications with the public and the need to modernize and maximize. And I'm looking at Jen sitting behind you. I'm really looking forward to the partnership between communications and DPW going forward, so congratulations and good luck.
We're looking forward to it, too. I think we got good things on the horizon with that.
Very exciting.
Counselor May.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. As the liaison for the DPW, sounds a little French, I guess. So, Joe, congratulations. It's really been quite a journey for you, and Rick Stinson, big shoes to fill, great guy. And I have to, if you'll bear with me one second. And I have to, if you'll bear with me one second, Mr. Sardella wrote a piece tonight, one paragraph, if you can bear with me. It says, "Joe Conway also received an enthusiastic letter of recommendation from former DPW Director Rick Stinson, who stressed Conway's strong leadership, communication skills, creative problem-solving ability, and extensive knowledge of public work issues." That's a huge recommendation from someone who we all think the world of. He's not spending a lot of time on vacation, but that's well deserved. But whatever we can do for you to help you along the way, congratulations. Obviously, you're, you have a fan club, and so you must be on Facebook.
If I can say, nobody can do this alone. I may be sitting in the seat in front of you, but again, this is the, this is the group, this is the team that makes it happen, so this is much about them today as it is for me.
Yeah. Well, congratulations. I think it's just fabulous, and it's nice, as Jan and Mary mentioned, about hiring from within is wonderful. When we can, Chief Scorey is a perfect example, and this is fabulous, so do us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Mr. Chair, let's just make one other request. You know, it'd be great if we could have you come back, Mr. Crowley, at a future meeting just to talk through some of the vision that you have. We won't put you through the paces today on that.
Sure. So, a little, a little forward thinking, we'd absolutely like to come back and get on the agenda. Part of the presentation that I did in the interview process, I gave a little insight to something that the chairman and the Finance Committee were looking for as far as our roadway planning and different things like that. So it'd be exciting to kind of interact with the board and bring that to you, and kind of see the mindset into things, so absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Sounds like an awesome idea.
Great. Certainly, if the, if the chair would allow, we'd love to, love to have that on the agenda.
The chair has been waiting for that for quite some time. Joe, congratulations to you. You know, I think it's a testament to your abilities, certainly. I was regularly speaking with Mr. Mayo about the process. I know that there were several qualified candidates, and you came out on top. And I think it also is a good reminder that there are opportunities within town. And so if you work hard and you're committed to doing, you know, all that you can to support our community, you know, there's opportunity to, for, to move up, up the ladder, you know, within all our departments. That's a really important piece to things. I know that one of the priorities that we'll hit the ground running on is, is the road analysis and then planning for that. I think you and Bill Renaud had a great presentation to me on that a few months back. You understand the numbers, you understand the planning process for that. Roads are going to be a priority going forward, certainly. And you, you know, you come to us, as some have said, you're hitting the ground running with that. I think that's going to be a huge asset to us. You know, there's, there's no learning curve here. You know, it's been 12 years of learning, and I think that that is, is really beneficial to the town as a whole. So I wish you well. I just, as everyone has echoed, I ask you to continue to be creative, to continue to approach every issue with, with a fresh set of eyes, and just assume that just because we've done things one way doesn't mean that's the best way.
Absolutely.
And I think there's a lot of opportunity, and I think you have a real opportunity to really chart your own course and lead a department in directions, you know, that make sense for all of us. And I look forward to working with you as a partner.
As do I. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we have, I will entertain a motion to accept Town Administrator Mayo's recommendation to appoint Joe Conway, Joseph Conway, as the DPW Director.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor May. Is there any discussion? Seeing done, the item before you is item number 11, the DPW Director Appointment. The vote would be for the appointment of Joseph Conway as Wakefield's new DPW Director. All those in favor? Seeing a down miss vote of 7-0, congratulations, Joe, and welcome to your new role.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, before Joe does go and makes his staff get back to work, there is someone that we should introduce, which is going to be very upset with me, but that's okay. Would you introduce that lovely lady over there? Yes.
So, I, I promise...
I know you promised you wouldn't, but I'm going to give you an order, Joe, so who...
It's my first official duty. I, I promised I would be quick, and I had asked before if she was okay with me mentioning it, but I really have to thank my wife, Kim. Through this whole thing, it's a lot of late nights, and it's a lot of early mornings. It's a lot of hi-bye at the door, and "I'll see you when I see you." She's been steadfast and kind of my rock behind the scenes, so not to get overly mushy or anything like that. But I really, I really appreciate everything she does for me, and I think, you know, behind every good man, there is a stronger woman, so.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. And for anyone who wants to learn more about Joseph Conway, you should watch the website. And in our, in our meeting packets, we have plenty of information, including 18 talking points by Mr. Mayo as to why Mr. Conway was chosen, so thank you for that. Next, our next item on the agenda is item number 12. This is the new, the presentation of the town's new website, and I would invite up Jennifer McDonald, our Content and Communications Manager, to provide this overview to us, a preview.
Is it something I said?
Popping the post in office, helping pop it.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to come. I know you have a big agenda, so I'll be as succinct as I can. I just need to figure out how my clicker works. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to review the new website project. So when this, the original site was built, it probably met the needs of the town quite well. Websites do tend to have a lifespan. There are new and different ways to showcase information and technology changes. And in our case, our, the thing that really spearheaded this was that the platform that our current site sits on, it is a third-party product, was being upgraded. So whether we liked it or not, we were going to move. So it was a great opportunity to kind of evaluate the site, see how it met everybody's needs, and redesign in the process. So as part of this, I did meet with every department head. They have been really great to work with. I've taken up a ton of their time. And we sat together and reviewed their entire section, what's working, what's not working, what kind of phone calls are they getting, and how can we maybe alleviate some of those calls? And a lot of times, people will call while they're on the website, and say, "I'm on your website, can you help me navigate to a certain thing?" So that feedback was really wonderful. We've also done a ton of data cleanup. We now have a common file naming convention. All the old outdated files have been kind of purged, because it's really frustrating when you're looking for, say, the yard waste schedule, and your search results are from 2017, and it's no longer relevant. Or if applications have new fees, and you're finding one that's outdated. So there's been a ton of scrubbing on the backend, too. So what I just want to show you is the current site, some of what I'll call the pain points or the challenges that I see, and maybe how we can resolve them moving forward. Okay, so here's the current site. As a communications person, the news, and especially in an age when everybody is hungry for information, the news is really hidden up in the corner. If you were not looking for news when you came, you had other business to do, you may not even realize it's there. The center section has historically been used for, I'll call them featurettes, things that have a little bit longer of a lifespan, because the news pushes down as new things are added. So is there a way that we can showcase this better? We have quick links on the left, and that tends to be subjective. You can get your, you know, top 10 most visited sites, but at the end of the day, the main reasons you come are different than the main reasons you come. So how can we still have that information available, but maybe present it a little bit differently? The Action Center took up even more top real estate before, and it's a little bit underutilized. Online payments is used a lot, and I'll get into that in a minute. But the other ones represented, I think it was like 8% of all the people who are on the homepage click these. So again, how can we use that real estate and showcase things a little differently? The Community Calendar, I know, has come up in these meetings before. It's an awesome tool. It's a self-service calendar where community groups can put their events on a calendar. If you're having a 5K at the lake, you can gain exposure on both this and the library's website. The folks at the library manage the calendar, and you can self-submit, but it's really tucked below the fold, so much so that I couldn't actually put it on the screenshot here. Boards and committees can only be accessed by this link here, and there's better user experience for this, because if you were to go into a department to do business and then realize you want to check out what the town council's doing, you actually have to come back to the homepage and figure out how to navigate from here. The DPW site feels a little disconnected, and it's not just the color scheme, but they have an entirely different top and side navigation. And the challenging thing is that the only way to get back to the town homepage, again, if you want to do additional business, is this one link right here, where you're brought to the homepage and then have to re-navigate. So there's a lot of opportunity to marry these a little bit better. Okay, so here is, and I did this with screenshots. I wasn't sure what the Wi-Fi situation was going to be, and I didn't want things to be really slow, so if things look wonky, that's probably why. So there have been a few iterations of this. I did walk some Wakefield College students through this. They gave me some great feedback. I also got my former web and design colleagues in a room. They were very gracious. They sat with me for a few hours, and we ran through, we tested things. They gave me some good feedback. So the nice thing about this kind of project is that it doesn't have an end date. If we find that things aren't working, we can make updates. If people have new ideas, we can incorporate them. So I'll run through just a few things that might be different than what you're used to looking at today. So news and events, right here on the homepage, whether you came for it or not, I'm hoping that you take a peek and find something that piques your interest. We obviously have to have all the public meetings, but the nice part about this is that it's just a tabbed calendar. So if you were to click the other tab, you're going to get brought to the Community Calendar, and it might be difficult for you to see such small things. But at the top is Submit an Event. You can quickly submit your event. The BB, again, manages that. If you were to scroll down, you can see the whole calendar. So whether you want to see a public meeting or what's going on around town, you can find that pretty quickly here. You can click on those events and get more information. The spot down here are the featurettes, as I'd call them, that were previously in the center. So there's still an opportunity to have things with longer lifespans at the bottom as highlights. If you were to click on one, you would get the information that you need there. Okay, so here we have a new feature that's called Get Town News, and I'll run through the two things. Again, this is probably hard for you to read. So one is to subscribe to the e-Alerts, the, some people call it Reverse 911 E-code. This is not something new, but while I had some attention, I just wanted to give a little bit of information about it. This is how emergency officials will get in touch with folks if there were, let's say, a hazmat situation, for example, where time is of the essence. You can sign up to receive an alert via phone, email, or text. The sign up is right here. It's a product of On Solve. And the one thing I did just want to highlight is that there's two options. You can create a managed account, or you can just say, "No, submit my information." If you were to move or get a new email, it's much more tedious if you don't create a managed account. If you create an account, username and password, then you can self-service anytime something changes. So I would definitely suggest doing that top one. But again, this is, this is not new, but very important. The other one is to subscribe to Town News, and there's three options here. So via email, you can receive an urgent alert. I'm not sure if any of you have been to the site when there's like a red banner across the top. That tends to happen when there is perhaps a big traffic detour and a parking ban, things like that. So you can get alerted when one is added. The second one is to get an alert anytime a news item is added. So now you don't have to visit every day, you can get them kind of sent to you. And the third one is when meeting agendas, meeting agendas are added by our town clerk's office. This might be especially good as not all committees meet on a regular basis. If there's one that interests you, you can sign up and receive the agenda when it's added. Okay, so here we have online payments, and we had a link to online payments before, but in speaking with Unipay, who manages all these online payments, there's no Wakefield hub. There's actually, I think, four or five Wakefield hubs. One is for DPW payments, like refuse containers and yard waste permits. One is for the Health Department permits, one is for your taxes. So the option when there's only one link is either you bring them to one and hope the other folks can figure it out, or you go to the Unipay site, in which case you have to sort through all the municipalities. So here, again, this is just a simple thing, but hopefully makes people's lives much easier. These list out everything and point to the correct Unipay hub, so all the online payments are here. And this blue bar, this whole top section, is consistent throughout the site. So no matter where you are, you're going to be able to bounce back between, this is Boards and Committees, and here's Departments. So whether you need to do business in two, or perhaps you wanted to visit the Town Administratives' Department and realize, oh, I forgot that actually is a town council item, you can bounce back and forth pretty quick. And here are just a couple of examples of internal pages. They're not finalized, they're still Q seeing them, but it just shows you that whether you're a Board or a Committee, the top navigation is consistent, and you'll be able to get here and there. And in the center is the Public Works page, and again, it's married much better into the site navigation now. The final thing is about Wakefield, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of items. Again, the Community Calendar here, there's a little section on Government where people can easily find bylaws, town charter, town meeting, budget, that kind of thing. But the two items I wanted to go into, one was Plan an Event, which Julie helped me with, thank you. So this is just a different way to package information that exists elsewhere on the site. So there's three steps to planning your event. One is to, whether yours is indoors or outdoors, you can go book a room at the Civic Center, or if you're having an outdoor event, you can make sure that you have a heads-up, "I need advance notice to get permits." The second is the different permits that you might need, depending whether you need an alcohol license or an outside permit. And then, spreading the word. Do you want to put on the online calendar, the specs for the banner across Main Street, all those things. The last, last thing that I wanted to touch upon is a very similar interface, which is Starting a Business, and it just lists out, I won't run through all of them, but it lists out the steps that you might need if you're going to start a business, the people you need to talk to, if you're having a business with food, the different regulations and permits you might need, and so forth. So I know that was quick, but happy to answer any questions or...
Thank you so much, Jen, for that. It looks fantastic.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Counselor DiNaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start things off.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And you did give me a one-on-one briefly on the whole issue. When's the rollout? A guest of it?
I would, I would love for this to roll out at least by the end of the month. I do want to be respectful that there is new leadership now. Some pages have changed more than others, so the timeline is a little bit dependent on when they feel comfortable with their pages, but we're, we're in a good place now.
So with all the different pages that you posted up there, and it being, even with my glasses on, it was hard for me to read, which ones do you feel was, or will pose to be the, the most difficult one to work with on these? I mean, and how easy will it be to add more requests that comes down the pike in the future?
The menus along the top are dynamic. You can, I can add something, you know, right now. The, the homepage is the most difficult for me to play around with. It is a third-party product, and I can't adjust those modules by myself. I actually have to have the tech support do it. So, for example, I wanted a, the Town News link, I needed, switched to something different, and they had to do it for me. So that takes a little bit more time to play with those modules. In terms of the internal pages, they're very quick.
Very quick on those.
Yep.
It, it looks fabulous. I can't wait to start actually working through the process and seeing how fluid it is, but it looks like you did a, a real good job at bundling it, and I appreciate...
And again, don't mean no idea...
And assisting. I mean, it's, it's always good to have an extra set of eyes looking at it, but it's, it's something that is long overdue, and I know there will be a ton of components that we want to add over the upcoming year or so, so it's a good, a great launch, but thank you.
Counselor Smith-Galvin.
I just, I just want to echo, thank you very much. I know this has been a tremendous amount of work, and you did, you did not say a lot of things... of work, and you did not say a lot of things that you did, like clean up a lot of the backend, which is PDF. There was a lot of things that weren't searchable, although we had, you know, a pretty robust search engine. Now everything is going to be searchable.
Yeah, we had a lot of scanned documents, so I tried to do some text recognition on those. There was a lot of work with the files.
It's going to be dynamic, so people can see it on their cell phones.
Yes, I didn't mention that. It's a part of the new platform. I don't know if you've ever tried to look at ours on the phone, but it's a dynamic, mobile-friendly.
Mobile-friendly, yeah.
Response.
Responsive.
So anyway, thank you very much. As you said, it's dynamic. I think we can all give feedback. I think the community can give feedback as they see things, and this is just going to be kind of an ongoing process. But, and we now have a standard, what we call a style guide as well. So colors will be consistent, fonts will be consistent. I know you're working to have that permeate all of our communications, business cards, business letterhead and whatnot. So I think we're going to see a much more kind of cohesive product.
Counselor Chines.
Likewise, thank you very much. I know we had a chance to connect today, and I played with the site, and I want to echo what everyone else said. I mean, I think, you know, both, it is physically just a really good-looking site, but also the way in which you interact within the usability for it was terrific. I just want to maybe put a request out there to some of our partner boards and committees. One of the things that Jen did do was standardize the way things like meeting minutes, meeting agendas, and also meeting packets can appear on the website. And, you know, certainly, you know, we do a great job, thanks to Sherri, in terms of getting our agendas and our minutes out there, and I'm thrilled that we're putting our packets online as well. I'd love to see us use this platform as sort of a call to action for other committees and boards in town to do the same thing, because I think now that we've got this platform, now that it is well-organized and searchable, and now that the, you know, effectively the envelope is there to put all the content, let's make sure we put the content out there.
And we have a new email address specifically for minutes where they can be forwarded to me. I will upload them. I know it's hard to see, but the one on the right is actually, that's the Retirement Board. And there is on, it's the same section on every board page. There's a section for agendas and a section for minutes when they are available to be posted.
Further questions or comments? Jen, just a couple of things I noticed. I came into your office for the last several months, and you were just going through so much of the backend stuff that people don't appreciate. Things were kind of in all different places, as Julie was saying. So you did a lot. There was a lot that you don't see, because it's all behind the scenes. But thank you for that, because that was huge. I think another important piece of this, too, is your ability to track traffic. So you can see where people are going and, you know, what parts of the page, you know, are most popular. And I think that that's an important piece, too, because as we say, it's a dynamic site. If we see certain things are drawing more traffic, then perhaps they get more prominence. And it also helps us to kind of understand better what the community is looking for in terms of.
And what couldn't they find before, maybe?
Right, exactly, exactly. And I think the style guide you've created is fantastic. We actually, we're actually the first adopters of that back when.
You have a rogue piece.
When it was not ready for primetime, you were gracious enough to create it for us. So we were kind of the cutting edge on that. But I just think you've done tremendous work. I know how many hours, how many hundreds of hours you've put into this, because, and I've seen it firsthand, you know, popping into your office on a regular basis. And I think the fruits of your labor speak for themselves.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Definitely. All right, no other questions or comments, and there's no vote required on this. And so we thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to.
I think, Mr. Chairman, why we have Jen here, we've also been working on a survey that maybe we can, regarding the MBTA and the bus lines, and maybe if you can give us two minutes on that or thirty seconds on that.
Sure. So I think in your last meeting, you mentioned that the MBTA and Department of Transportation came and allowed municipalities the opportunity to propose pilots based specifically on commuter rail and bus. And that could be frequency routes or hours of operation. So what we wanted to do was hear from the commuters. The MBTA has some data. It's not great. It's not robust. But we really want to know, especially in terms of Wakefield, what do people want? Would you use the bus more frequently if it ran, you know, a different route throughout Wakefield? Are they too crowded when you get on? Do they, you know, not meet your needs? So what we did is we built a survey. I worked with Maureen. We figured out what information do we want to know. We built a survey, and then I'm hoping to launch it tomorrow. I didn't want to do it before this meeting. We have social components. We'll do posters. And then I made for you for office hours or farmer's market, just little quick cards that give a blurb on what we're doing with a quick link, so that we can really understand what our residents, specifically Wakefield riders, want, so that we can then propose something to the MBTA. The survey will close September 1st. I think the proposals are due on the 15th, so it would give about two weeks for the council to review the data and figure out what it is that they would want to propose.
Great. So just, I just, in addition to working on the website, creating the survey so quickly was really useful. So we encourage everyone to go. It's actually online, because I know Counselor Santos took it, and I took it. So it's wakefield.m-a.us/MBTA. We will have it on social media first thing in the morning.
Tonight.
Tonight, first thing in the morning. Please share. It's fifteen, fourteen, fifteen. Really quick questions, but there's an opportunity to write about those issues that Jen mentioned. Thank you so much. I think we're going to get some good responses from folks who use the commuter rail and bus to commute into Boston. So thank you.
And there's paper copies at the library if you happen to know someone who's not online.
Thank you so much, Jen, for your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I'll just leave these over here when you're ready.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number thirteen, kiosks. Wakefield Main Streets is here to present a proposal. This relates to possible signage or acknowledgements, recognizing the major donors of the four kiosks that appear around the town. And with that, I'll let you go ahead and identify yourself and offer your thoughts.
Thank you, Jen. Bob Melhuy, 157 Montrose Ave. So, okay, to get started.
Please.
So I'm here tonight to get the approval of the town council for the plaques, for the sponsors, for the kiosks. The plaques have been part of the kiosk approvals since the very beginning. So we're really here tonight just to take a look at the proposal you have in front of you. I'm sure it was sent out. The plaques were designed and the artwork provided by Ann Hally of JC Marketing of Wakefield. We all know Ann. She does a fantastic job with everything she's done. She's always been around the town, helping different groups. The plaques themselves will be produced by Reading Trophy. They are four inches high and fifteen inches long, and they'll be centered on the blackboard or the black panel underneath the door, which holds the maps. The panel itself is thirty-four inches long and five inches high, so we felt like that, you know, the size that we chose for the plaques is centered, and immediately we'll have a good, in the middle, excuse me, we'll have a good, solid look. We're hoping to have them up by the Festival of Italian, if we can get approval for them this evening. Again, it's twenty days away or whatever it is, so we'd have to move quick, but I think Reading Trophy can help us out with that if we get approval this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any preliminary questions for Mr. Melhuy?
I'll jump in. So I know that you'll hear comments, and you've heard them. I've read them. I, in smart, good minds can disagree. Lawyers can disagree, but I would have no problem litigating that our policy does not speak to what you're talking about here. I don't think that the policy would prohibit this type of sign, this addition to the kiosk. I mean, I'd be happy going into court to argue that. You know, I read the policy over again, and I think there's a really good, a good argument why it doesn't. I also, I know that, again, good minds can differ, but I think for our businesses who gave considerable donation to the kiosks, I don't see any problem with having that noted. I think, again, that doesn't violate the language of the policy. As an attorney, I'd be happy to argue that, too. I know some folks aren't happy with the design, so, you know, that can be, I guess, discussed. But I don't have a problem with this, and I don't think it violates our policy at all.
Thank you.
Further comments? Counselor Dinoco.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm going to be a little bit more elaborate on this whole, the whole issue. Process is a key component to anyone who comes in before this board in order to obtain permission to do just about anything that they want. Transparency is often the word that they want to put out there in any good argument. Main Street has been very transparent from the get-go when this first started. When they had to go and deal with patronicity and mass development, they needed this board permission for what they were proposing in order to do, to get mass development to say green light. So they made a presentation to this board in saying, "We want to put lights on. We want to put benches on." The benches would have plaques. "We want to do kiosks." The kiosk would have plaques. They made a full presentation back in 2017, if I'm not mistaken. And the board then said, "Great, we like it. Let's move forward with it." So all of the components, at one time or another, has been brought up at one of our meetings. All components, whether it's the height of an item, the width of an item, the color of an item. They were even gracious enough, when they were going through the kiosk procedure, to hire the same consultant we had, okay, so that they would be in step with us for the branding and wayfaring component. They didn't have to come before us. They didn't even have to talk to us about the contract that they had with Mr. Faverman to make the presentation. They knew that they had a kiosk to present, and they felt that it was in their best interest to make it look in the way that we were heading. And they did so. All the components were already discussed at some point in time. I don't understand why we have to make this particular body jump through another hoop in order to fulfill their obligation to four individuals who put up over $2,500, knowing that their name was going to appear on a kiosk. And this board, at that time, knew that was what was going to happen. Now, we're saying that a rule that was created after the fact should apply to this. I disagree. It's just like me getting permission from the ZBA to build something. And then I start my project, and before we can get the project done, they change the bylaw, and then all of a sudden, they say, "Oh, now you have to comply." No, you can't make someone do that, because they've already received permissions from the existing body or rules in place at that time. For us to impose a harder hardship now, you're going to make them now, they're almost at completion. If we say yes to this, they're done. But now, if they don't say yes to this, now we're going to have to extend it for another thirty days, maybe forty-five days, depending upon when we can get them onto an agenda. I don't think it's necessary personally. I think they fulfill their obligation in all aspects. Would it occur if something new came out of this that wasn't initially discussed? Absolutely, the rule would apply. If some further change comes into play where signage of any type or change to the kiosk, sure, I think it would apply at that point, but not at this point. And that's my argument right now. I think that the, it's a sound argument to be put forward. And I'll argue this day in and day out. This started in 2017. It's ready for completion. The town already owns them, yes, but they're fulfilling their obligation. These four individuals, they put up a lot of money in order to help them get the kiosk delivered. So I don't know what more to say at this point.
Just before that, so if I'm understanding what you're saying, Counselor Dinoco, then you're, in essence, arguing that this request is grandfathered in? Is that a fair characterization?
I'm saying that this board has, in essence, already approved the affixing of a plaque onto all of the kiosks.
I guess, so that's the question I have, then, Madam Clerk or Mr. Melhuy, whether you know this. Do we know that? Because I have heard, you know, different statements on that. Some people have said that it was, that plaques were approved by the council. Others have said plaques were promised by the Main Streets organization to the major donors. And I don't have that answer, and I don't know whether anyone does.
I don't remember seeing plaques in the original presentation, personally. Correct?
Correct.
No? Yeah, we did not.
So I think that's part of the issue. I don't want to conflate these ideas. So I understand what you're saying, you know, Counselor Dinoco, if there were certain promises made to these donors, and these donors provided a large amount of money in anticipation of certain things. But I would like to know whether, in fact, this body had ever approved that at that time. And I don't know that that was the case. It sounds as if, from what I've been hearing, it's more likely that they were promised by Main Streets to the major donors. But the plaques themselves were not something that came before this body back in 2017, 16, whenever that was, is my understanding of that. Does anyone have a different understanding of that? Because I think those are very different concepts. Yes, Mr. Melhuy?
So I will say that the plaques were part of the entire package. Now, whether we sat here individually and talked to them, you know, about plaques and what they would look like, probably not. But I would say as part of our advertising package, which was part of the patronicity program that we brought before the board, they were definitely in that, they were definitely part of that conversation. We were reaching out for sponsors. We were reaching out for different levels of sponsorships. I think it, honestly, I think it would be, I think it would be an absolute shame if we weren't able to honor that commitment, not only by us, but by the town, to those businesses in town that have made that type of commitment to us. I think, honestly, I don't really think that this really warrants this type of conversation. I think we're really, we're picking at, we're picking at old wounds and failings and everything else, but we're arguing over a fifteen-ish, fifteen-inch by four-inch plaque that's going to advertise some of our best and most-giving small businesses in town. I don't really understand what the issue is, policy or no policy. I don't think that we would have to, if this wasn't approved this evening, you're really going to have to go back and look at every plaque that's really been applied on anything in the town. And just, you'd have to go back through every town meeting, every note, excuse me, town council meeting, board of select meeting, and see what was approved. I mean, are we prepared to do that as a town? And if, and if so, are we ready to remove plaques and stones and engravings that, you know, don't currently meet this new standard? It doesn't make sense to me.
I don't think it has to do with the new standard. What I think it has to do with though is making sure that we are representing the history of this properly. And I think before this body, we need to make sure that, was this something that was committed to by our predecessors, or was this something that was not discussed by our predecessors? And that's not a question of whether we should or should not do some sort of recognition, but it's a question of, let's make sure that we're clear in terms of what happened historically to get us to this point, rather than have, you know, differing, you know, recollections. It sounds like, from what you're saying, you know, Bob, that the plaques weren't discussed specifically at the time, back in 2017. And that very well may not have been the case. I'm sure that you probably weren't focused on the plaques as much as you were the broader concept. But I don't think that we can come into this discussion with the expectation that this is something that our predecessors had approved, and now we're just executing on that. If we're talking about plaques today, then yes, that's a discussion that should be had. But I don't, it sounds as if that discussion hadn't been had specifically back when the concept was introduced.
So I was here.
But Sherman, or Santos?
The plaques weren't just, I didn't just hear about them in the last couple of weeks. I know that they were talked about. Were they talked about at our meeting? I'm not sure. Were they included in a package, and we didn't micromanage the bejesus out of every detail back then? Our council didn't do that, and we were fine with the big picture. So it might have been in the package. We saw the acknowledgement. None of us had an issue with it, and we moved on. But I know that the acknowledgements, and I wouldn't call it advertising, because you're going to get all kinds of like, people yelling about advertising. I think it's an acknowledgement. It's a sponsorship. I would use that word. But it's not a foreign concept to me that this was going to be on the kiosks, but I don't have a firm memory of us voting for it or going into it in detail. I think it was something back then that we thought, why, of course, if someone was going to give a lot of money.
Right.
Right.
That would have an opportunity. I know, I know that that was chatted about, and if it means going back, looking at meetings or looking at my notes, but it's, it didn't just come up when letters started getting written and people started talking about it within the last couple of months.
Counselor May.
Yeah, so I agree with Ian and Paul, Counselor Santos and Counselor Dinoco. I believe it was part of the package. I don't think we specifically, if you look at every minute that we had, all the minutes the last, you know, I've been here three years and a couple of months. I would say, no, we didn't have a specific vote, but as Ian said, we don't, we didn't do that back then. We didn't have every single item agreed upon and voted on. This is part of the package, and I think it's an abomination if we start nickeling and diming people that are donating things. I, I think Ian's right, that this is different. This is different than the plaques and the benches and things. Now, these folks donated a lot of money towards this. They anticipated having these little plaques, which isn't gonna change anything. It's not, it's not something coming up, like Ian said a couple of weeks ago. This has been going on for three years, probably more. I think it's horrible we're even getting to this point. I think we're, we are micromanaging, and I think that we need to step up and vote for people that have agreed on this three years ago, and not sit here and nickel and dime donations, donations that are coming in from Main Streets, Savings Bank, Keith's Trees, Wayfield Daily Item. These are all people that support the town all the time. This has been going on for years. If we sit here and start saying, "You know what, Bob, we're not doing, forget it." Why the heck are they even giving money to us anymore? This is nuts. They're helping the town. I think that we need to pass this, and I think it's something, as Ian agreed to, or thought, thought would happen as a package item. This certainly wasn't individually, that I remember either, voted on or not voted on. But it's a package of donated monies from great sponsors that make the town fabulous. And I think we need to vote it in, not screw around. That's me. Thank you.
I mean, I do think, something to keep in mind is, we have to understand how we got here, so that we don't end up here again.
Yeah.
And that's really what I'm getting at, because as much as we can say this is a one-off, frankly, it's not that. And I think that's where, where my concern lies. I'm not opposed to the idea of, of recognition. That's not what this is about. But I do have hesitation when certain promises are made. And I was, I was told by one, one person in particular that, that it was gonna be, each of the major sponsors was given a recognition on one of the kiosks. There being four major sponsors, each of them would be given recognition. I should also point out that we have those maps, those maps of town. We prominently display the sponsors on those maps, including Wakefield Main Streets. So the idea of, I mean, this to me, a 15 by 4-inch looks like a bumper sticker. It looks like we're putting a bumper sticker on kiosks. I don't think that this is in keeping with the style or design of the kiosk. So if we're talking about recognition, let's have that discussion. But I think the discussion has to be, okay, understanding there may, there may have been promises, there may not have been promises, but whatever the case is, we find ourselves here today, what can we do to remedy the situation in a way that is tastefully done? I don't think that each of these kiosks, personally, should have this kind of marketing across the bottom of it, because that's really what it is. There are, if we look at our benches, for example, it's a very simple plaque that we have on. It's small, it's simple and the like. Is there any reason why we can't consider the Daily Item, for example, a major sponsor? There's a kiosk at the corner of Main and Albion. Rebirth, by the lake, there's a lot of physical activity. That, that, we designate that as theirs. And we have, I would say, a smaller, more, more innocuous recognition on these kiosks that doesn't distract from the kiosk itself. I mean, these are very simple. They're, they're black-framed, they have the, the bandstand top color to them, and that's it. And they have plenty of content in them. I don't think having a band below the bottom is what we're looking to achieve here, especially when those maps will perpetually have the major sponsors on them. So, I think that's something that we should, as a body, consider as, as an alternative. Further discussion or thoughts?
I guess, and, and I'm listening to public comment as well, and setting aside the policy, 'cause I'm not sure that that applies, but in our bylaws, and I know that Mr. Mullen is not here, and I, and I quickly did a, a search, we can have advertising or sponsorship. I, I agree that there may be some nuance there. Would we have to accept? We can't say we were okay advertising from this business but not this business. I mean, if we're gonna accept having advertising or sponsorship on public property, which is essentially what this is, are we wading into an area here where we're, we're gonna be picking and choosing, or, or, I mean, similar to the flag situation we just had at the, at, at the Americal, where we were, you know, kind of connecting things to certain topics? So, I know I'm not being very articulate here, but I just wonder from kind of a bylaw and a First Amendment, whether there's any issues there. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
You bring a, a, a different way of looking at, 'cause you're looking at the plaque as being an advertising piece.
I am.
Okay, so, so I, I wasn't looking at it that way, and I'm, I'm more looking at it in the way as, as it's an acknowledgement of sponsorship. So, so is it, is it, is it just a terminology component? Or, I, I, I'm not sure. It's, it, it's a good point, I'm not saying, I'm not distracting.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But I, I never looked at it as an advertising, it's an acknowledgement of, it's just like right now, without the Savings Bank, you wouldn't have the Savings Bank Theater. We didn't have any problem with, with, I don't think that even came before any board. That sign went up.
Okay.
They gave us $220,000, I think, for that.
No, I think that the board did approve that.
No, the board did. We voted on that.
We voted on that?
Yes.
So what if, what if there was a sponsorship from somebody that this board did not want to accept, that was not in keeping with our town's values? Could we say no?
I think we could.
My opinion, you could say no to that.
Well, you could say no to that.
We could say no to the money. Okay. And so to these groups, we've said yes.
Right.
Essentially, by saying yes to Main Streets.
And honestly, I mean, if we're talking about putting, they're not, I don't consider them advertisements. I mean, they're, we're just acknowledging sponsors, just like, you know, all the signs on the back of the baseball fields all over town. They're really, it's, it's the same thing. We're on a much smaller scale, but I mean, they, those companies, you know, they pay for those spots on the fence. They hang them on the Little League, they hang them on the high school softball, football area play. So this isn't really any different, other than they, you know, they committed a much larger sum to, you know, to, to this. I mean, it's really no different.
I know, Mr. Counselor Dinoco, you had mentioned previously, you had talked about plaques in the past, and you said like, I think a 3 by 3 or 4 by 4 was what your understanding was. So you can see we've been all over the place in terms of...
We, we have been, and, and trust me. But not being on the board, okay, now, I, I, and after, I don't know what the new, the sponsors have talked to with them. I mean, it, I, it's not something that I, I pursue to say, I can push that issue. Okay? Because it's not, it's not up to me to deal with it. They're trying to fulfill an obligation to the, to the sponsors that gave the money. They had to have talked to them and said, "Are you happy with this?" And they had to agree, or they wouldn't presented it to us. And that's how I'm looking at it right now. I know Rebirth wants to be on the lake. He's told me that a number of times. He's very disappointed that his name isn't on one of the sponsorships right now. He said, "This is bullshit." His exact words.
Ooh.
Okay? But, but, and, and I can understand his frustration. I can understand his frustration, though. But the same thing. Keith is going on Water Street, and the Item and the Savings Bank are going on the Albion Main Street one. So, I mean, they know where the locations are going, 'cause they picked their locations. Okay? So, and they had to be happy with this. That's all I'm trying to say. Julian had to be happy with this.
Counselor May.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. So, I think you had an excellent point earlier. I think there is, I wasn't sure where you were going with that, but when you mentioned to Counselor Dinoco about grandfathered in, I think you have to go back to that. I think this is something that took place, it's a done deal, and I think if it happened today, it would be different. We'd all look at it differently. I think we're like reneging on something. Julie had some great points a minute ago. I think that it's just not right that we're now drooling down on this, the size, the color, the content. These are sponsors, even though it's not $220,000 like the Savings Bank Theater, God knows who would take that, would agree almost on anything, give or take Confederate flags going up for 225. But I think that this happened, we agreed to it. This is part of it, it wasn't individually itemized, but we agreed to this, and I think a grandfathered point is very important. I don't think we should, we should drool down and say no to these folks who donated this money three or four years ago.
Is there any reason, though, that we can't have a smaller presence and just have each of the four businesses represented on a different kiosk? I mean, why, why is it that Keith, we can't have Keith's at the corner of Main and Water? Why can't we have Rebirth by Vets Field? Why can't we have the Savings Bank at the, at the Digital? Or why can't we have the Daily Item at Albion and Main?
Isn't that, well, well, the Keith's Tree is going by Water.
What we have is like, we have basically, but it's a 15 by 4.
Right.
Large, large sticker that has, Main, this Main Streets logo is very prominently placed on, on the map already, and, as are the other major sponsors. But setting that aside, why, why is it that we could not have something that is, is, say, you know, I don't know, like silver or copper, whatever the case is, that looks more permanent, and just for each, each business having its own kiosk? Because what you're talking about, Counselor Dinoco.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of Rebirth, he was interested in, in that spot. We could allocate that spot as his and put, sponsored by Rebirth. We could allocate the Digital kiosk, my understanding is the Savings Bank is the largest donor, I think. We could allocate the Savings Bank to the Digital kiosk. We could allocate the Daily Item to Albion and Main. And then we could assign Keith's Tree to, to Main and Water. It is a much more subtle way of achieving the same objective without bands.
Well, I think there are, those are the spaces that they're gonna be in. The only difference is, you know, the Wakefield Main Streets logo will be on there with them, as it should be, quite honest with you. I mean...
The Wakefield Main Streets logo is prominently placed on the maps themselves, on, on the boards themselves.
Again, I, I think we're nitpicking, honestly. I mean, I think Wakefield Main Streets has been at this for three years. We should, honestly, we should have an 8 by 10-foot banner around those kiosks for all the work we've done and all the aggravation that we've gone through. For us to, to be nitpicking over a 4-inch Wakefield Main Streets logo, it doesn't make any sense. Yes, we're on the map for now, but what happens with the next board, who decides that they don't want logos on the map? I mean, we're not all gonna be here forever changing those maps every single time. And that's one of the reasons we came up with that, is because we're, we're very, very concerned, having worked with this board and other boards in town, quite honest with you, that once we walk away from the table, anything can change on those maps. We're not involved in any of the process of creating the maps, of printing the maps, or picking what goes on, that goes on the maps anymore. That's it. So that's why we came up with a permanent, more permanent solution of the plaque. Because Main Streets needs to be on there. And honestly, I'm a little offended that there's even talk about taking Main Streets logo off there after all the work we've done on there. I mean, that came through a grant that we approved, that we received and applied for and received through the state, $100,000. We didn't have to do anything with the kiosk on the lake. We didn't have to do anything with anything in town. We could have put it all towards marketing, we could have put it all towards operational costs, we could have done anything. And, and to sit here again, and again, and again, and again, it just doesn't make any sense. If you don't want the kiosks, honestly, I'll go to my board and just say, "Just turn them off." That's really the way I feel at this minute.
I guess the question, though, is what is the purpose, what is the intention of the kiosks? Is the kiosks, are the kiosks intended to provide information or to promote Main Streets? And I think that's where there might be a disconnect. Main Streets is, is well-promoted on the maps as they are.
So the kiosks were designed to get people downtown to shop us, shop our businesses. Okay? The Main Street, just like if the Chamber was doing this, the Chamber would have the same logos all over the place, just like we do. Anything the Chamber does, the Chamber logo is on there. Main Streets is part of growing that downtown. We need visibility, we need our name out there, we need our logo out there in order to fundraise and to convince people to donate to our cause so that we can help the businesses. Now, we're out, you know, we, we are much more nationally, we are much more than kiosks and lights and benches. You know, we can be grants, we can help with doing classes for, for businesses to build, build their business, we can do a number, we have a banking, a Wakefield program. We are way more than this. But we've wasted, honestly wasted, months and months and months on minutia and stuff that, quite honestly, has been going through this, this board for years, without any questions. And now we come, we come up and, honestly, we didn't vote on the lights and the, and the panels either. So why don't we take those, why don't we vote on those? We didn't vote on, on the color of, you know, of the background in those, or the corkboard that we might use in the back. We didn't vote on any of that. So if we're gonna go through it individually and vote on every single piece, we're in for a long, we're in for a long haul. It'll never get done. And I'm sure, like you, you know, I'm getting emails right now from activists in town wondering why they're sitting there and not working.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor May.
Yeah, so, thank you. So I think, if you don't mind, Bob, let me ask you a question. Would have been better if I was an attorney, probably would not. Clarity-wise, can you just help me? As, you know, Brian Falvey used to say, I'm not pro or con, actually, I'm very pro what you're saying, but can you give me some clarity about what your intent, what you think the intent was on the package deal three or four years ago? Can you just give me, give us a little help? And, did you think with the, with Steve, where's your, sorry? So, did you, do you think the intent was to have these on each of the kiosks? Is that correct?
The specific design, I don't know, but we definitely had, we did have...
Each of the, each of the sponsors?
Yeah, intentions of, to honor our sponsors.
Okay, so, and so, Mr. Chair, I don't think the intent was to have one name on each one, whether Wakefield Main Streets is already on the kiosk or not, I, I think that's part of it. I think it's part of the donation in general. The bumper sticker, as someone said earlier, I think the intent was to have each one have the four, three or four, whatever it is, names. How do you have the intent?
Actually, we, we're able to actually pull up the intent, and if you gave $2,500 or more, you were, you were to be recognized on one of three kiosks. So that was, that was...
One of three or all of them?
It said one of three.
Okay.
So that was, so that was pretty clear, looking at the, the site itself.
Whatever, whatever it is, we shouldn't be, I, we shouldn't be nickeling and diming people that are sponsoring big things in our town. I think that going forward, it's different now. We've changed a lot of things, whether it's benches, or barrels, or kiosks, or whatever. But I think that we're really, I think we're killing this, we're killing this donation, and we're killing the, the whole intent of people that are sponsoring, working hard, working as hard as we do here, giving money to make the town better, which is what we're all here for. I think, again, Julie's last points were excellent, and I, I think we really need to do it.
I don't think anyone is, is, I haven't heard anyone opposed to recognizing sponsors on kiosks. Is there anyone opposed to that? Just kind of a straw poll for that? Is anyone opposed to the idea of recognizing the sponsors on kiosks? I think the question is...
What's the intent?
The manner in which we recognize the sponsors.
So you're saying what, size and color and clarity?
What I'm suggesting is that, and it's also consistent with what was pulled up here, that if, if each of the major sponsors is assigned a recognition plaque on a particular kiosk, I think that's a, a more subtle and more appropriate, and frankly, more prominent way of recognizing each of the businesses. I think that's consistent with the businesses, the donors' expectations. I think, and we do have an aesthetic consideration for us. This is town property.
Sure.
I, I don't, I don't see a need or a purpose to have this kind of a banner. If you think about the kiosks, again, they're very simple. The content is inside, is encased in there, not on the outside perimeter. So the idea of maintaining some, some semblance of, you know, a simple, uniform look, I think is, is, is probably more in line with what the town would want, and doesn't at all compromise the business interests. In fact, I think enhances them. enhances them. Because if you're going past Vets Field and you see um Rebirth as the Sponsored by Rebirth, I actually think Julian would like that more, candidly. And I think it's more in line with what the, what the expectations were presented to the donors. So I, that's, so I don't, I don't know that anyone is, no one's opposed to the idea of the recognition. What's that recognition look like? That's the question. Councilor Chines.
Mr. Chair, just, you know, understand the point. And I think we all, you know, wanna make sure that the, the kiosks, given that they are on town property, represent the town really well. I feel like we're getting into a level of minutia that's sort of beyond the scope of what's, what's kind of reasonable here. I mean, to me, the question in front of us is really, you know, are we allowing the plaques or not? And, you know, based on the poll that you just did, I, I feel like you've got a pretty strong indication that the, the council is supportive of allowing the plaques. From my perspective, I think, you know, a four by fifteen plaque on a kiosk, that's, you know, the size of a small car in some cases, is just not really material. I mean, I, I would move that we, we move on and I make a motion that we accept the plaques.
Second question.
All right, so the motion on the floor then is, and just to clarify, you're looking to accept, when you say accept the plaques, what do you mean?
As proposed.
So to be clear, we have this plaque in our packet.
My understanding is, Mr. Mayo, you had shared with us the designs for each of the plaques in the town administration notes.
They, they came to, to our office after the packet went out.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's why.
All right, so the motion on the floor then for item number thirteen is acceptance of the plaques that had been um offered by Wakefield Main Streets, one included in the packet, three that followed, um from the primary sponsors. All of those in favor? Okay, so I see one, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? And I'm opposing based upon the size. I think it would have been better to have each, each business prominently displayed on a separate, separate kiosk. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Your phone's right in front. I can see it. Don't forget.
Bob, don't break your phone. Bob, don't forget your phone. It's ringing, it's ringing. I think it's Susan.
I'm sure it's Bob.
It's Susan. It's Susan. We said hello.
Item number fourteen is the charging stations. Um, we have um, we have a gas and light, right?
We do. I think they're coming.
Oh, we got a whole bunch of them.
The Gas and Light Department here to um provide a summary of, of a site assessment for possible installation of electric vehicle charging stations. Good evening. Identify yourselves, please.
I'm Pete Dion, General Manager of Wakefield Gas and Light Department.
And Kathleen Connors from Voltreck. I did some consulting work on this project.
Welcome.
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 Thank you.
So by way of background, obviously, if you're not familiar with what's going on in the whole EV world, the, the goal of the state and the nation is to obviously make EVs a greater part of our vehicle and transportation infrastructure. Two years ago, we purchased a Nissan Leaf at the Light Department. And we began promoting electric vehicles um through participation in the farmer's market, um charging, uh, Level Two Charger giveaways to customers that um purchased a, an all-electric vehicle. And as an evolution of this, um, the next level of that would be to start to invest in the infrastructure. So uh with Julie's help, and we've met with Steve a couple of times, we've actually talked about what should we do and um the Light Department uh was offering to install a Level Two Charger somewhere. But before we did that, we um contracted with Colleen and, I mean, Kathleen and Voltreck to look at where the best places might be. And as part of that study, we identified, the town identified a bunch of spaces that we could potentially use. And then we asked Voltrek to look at them and evaluate which would be the best from multiple perspectives. Electrical infrastructure, physical location, um, uh, traffic patterns. There were a lot of different, you could talk about what went into the study.
Yeah, a lot of different factors. I mean, obviously, availability of power was an integral to this and working with the utility on those points. But we also started with a list of locations that we had some input from, from Julie and Stephen in the town. So we, we walked all of those locations for parking availability, seeing how everybody used them at the different locations. The Civic Center was a great location. We evaluated some possibilities on Main Street curbside and sort of eliminated some of those locations based on the feeling that the, some of the, the shop owners would probably not be thrilled if we took spaces out in front of their shops. So we sort of weighed all the pros and cons and tried to come up with something that would be visible, but um in a location that we can get a lot of buy-in from the, from local drivers and attract drivers from outside of the town also to come in, you know, off of the highway to come here to get a fast charge, go somewhere downtown, plug in for forty minutes, get a coffee, you know, patronize the stores downtown and then be on their way. So, so there's all these factors, looking at where are people recreating at the Vets Field? And so trying to satisfy all of those needs with a, a small number of stations to kind of work as a pilot and gather some information over the next year. And that's sort of what...
So what, what came back after, we originally planned to, to kind of donate the infrastructure for a single charger, but through the study, uh, one of the big things we determined was that the value of a Level Three Charger to bring people to the downtown, that, that half hour, forty minute charge and try to get people to come off of one twenty-eight. One of our commissioners, Tom Betcher, uh, made noted as an EV owner that there's really a, a kind of a desert of, of Level Three Chargers in this greater, greater Wakefield area. So bringing one to this area might help draw people off the highway. So with the department, with the help of the board, agreed to uh offer the town three chargers. A Level Three in the downtown area uh at the, at the um, I guess they call it the Smith Street, or it's the public parking lot on Main and Water. And then a Level Two Charger at Vets. And also, what became kind of a little bit of a free rider because the infrastructure's virtually right there would be to put one right at the Civic Center. Cause there's some semi-underutilized spaces against the Civic Center. And there's new electrical infrastructure pretty close to there. So we could, we could add a third one, a Level Two, right there without much, with relatively minimal capital investment other than the charger itself. So, so the, the Light Department and the board uh voted last month to offer the town actually three chargers, two Level Twos and a Level Three. And so that tonight, we just wanted to come to you because what's gonna have to happen is the board's gonna have to identify and approve the spaces that we're recommending. And the reason we're recommending them is, is twofold. Kind of the greater benefit of where they stand in terms of trying to draw people to the downtown and also have somewhat visibility because you want, part of the benefit of doing this is that to get more people to use electric vehicles, they have to believe the infrastructure exists. I know if I go to the head of the lake, I could fill my gas tank at Cummins or wherever, but I don't know where I could charge my electric vehicle. So the more visible these are in putting them in more visible places will increase the confidence level that there is infrastructure in place to, and that's one of the things that's gonna help expand the use of electric vehicles.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilor Dinoco.
I'll let Julie go first.
I, I just want, I just want to add, because I, because I have been involved and wanted to thank um WMGLD and the Commissioners and General Manager Dion and Kathleen from Voltreck. Um, and having just been through the kiosk discussion, I think it is important that we understand some of the objectives and goals when we are, you know, accepting um gifts or infrastructure from whether it's private organizations or sister government or organizations like the Light Department. So um, and, and please feel free to interject if, if I don't get these right, but I think we are looking at, and this is no, no particular prioritization, environmental leadership and environmental reputation of Wakefield, which I do think is, is coming along on that. And given our location, there are not um a huge abundance of electric vehicle chargers um in the immediate area. And given our location really at the corner of two major highways, we think that it would be a draw for people out of town. Similarly, to drive new out-of-town customers here to charge and then to frequent our businesses. We weren't necessarily thinking about um the electric vehicle residents that we have, though through subsequent conversations that I've had, there may be some opportunities for that as well. Beneficial electrification, as um Mr. Dion said, um, there's, there's a real movement towards electric vehicles. And this shows that the infrastructure will be here. Clearly, there's some environmental and health benefits to electric vehicles or EVs, as we say for short. Um, and then really, um, we see this as a pilot program. So this would be kind of a, a couple, get our experience, um, understand how the rate structure works, and understand whether there is a need for expansion of the program. So those are kind of the high level, did I miss anything?
No.
I think those are kind of the high level um objectives. I think there are still some um details to be worked out in terms of, I mean, the Light Department is very generously offering this as a donation. I think there's some details to be worked out in terms of covering costs and, and locations and all of that. And I would be very much open to my colleagues' comments here. And I've gotten some very good community input as well through the availability of the packet information. And I just wanna say, I'm not sure we're, we're ready for an exact vote tonight, but I would like to just hear the conversation and then perhaps plan what the next steps are.
Councilor Dinoco.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Mr. Dion, thank you, uh, for your presentation. First question. If someone comes in that wants to put one of the EV units into the town, it has to go through the Light Department, correct?
There has to connect through us, yeah.
Okay.
So if it was, you're talking about a private business?
How, how many, how many EV stations are there already? I know there's two at Tonos.
Right. So I'm not, there's, there's few that have had to come directly through us just for the charger itself because most are connected to the building service. However, there's several up at Edgewater. Uh, there's some, uh, there's a couple at the Apartments across the street of fourteen Audubon. So there's probably a total of eight up in the Edgewater area. But again, those are attached to the building services. They didn't need special approval from us because they just tied it into their own electrical infrastructure.
I think the addition of the three is a fabulous idea. Don't get me wrong. I have a difference on locations for, for a few of them. I have my preferences. I do think that the L three should be at the Civic Center, not at the uh Smith Street parking lot. I think that the the one closest to Main Street would be a lot more visible for someone driving the street. They'd see it, they'd use it more often. And then Vets Field. Those would be my three choices, slightly different than what your choices are.
The one closer to Main Street.
So the Level Three at Civic Center.
Yeah, except we can't put it there because there's no infrastructure to support it.
I thought that was an alternate site.
I don't think...
No, it isn't.
The Civic Center is an alternate site for the L three.
Yeah, we can drop a poll in there if we wanted to. It's not existing.
I'm, I'm, I'm only going by the paperwork. It's an alternate site for the L three.
Okay.
So I'm just saying that would be my choice of, of having the L three there instead of having it at the rear of the lot. I wouldn't have it in favor of going in front of um the, the business on, at the corner of Crescent Street. And I don't think it would be beneficial to eliminate two merchant parking spaces that we just created across from the Public Safety Building. So I mean, I would probably have a hard time going for those two. But again, that's just my two cents on this. I think that I would, I would prefer having the L three at the Civic Center and L two at the, I could say the Lincoln Street parking lot. I don't know why. I, Smith Street doesn't roll off well enough. And then Vets Field. Those would be the three that I would recommend. I do like the concept. I do think that if people see it, they're going to use it. I don't want it to become an issue like Melrose has right now, where I'm hearing that the same three cars are parked in the same three spots all night long. And the people just leave them on the charges. So they've got their own private parking spaces right now.
I have a great solution for that.
No overnight parking.
You can also charge them five dollars, ten dollars, twenty dollars an hour, whatever you wanna make it.
Is there an automatic shut off?
Go on their charging time.
Is there an automatic shut off on those?
There's not an automatic, well, what do you mean? How so?
It will stop when your vehicle's full.
It stops when your vehicle stops charging.
When the vehicle's charged, does it stop charging?
Yes.
Okay, so how long is that typically?
Depends on the type of, and size of charger.
Give me an L two. So an L two, how fa, how long would it take?
It still depends, but you could be there three hours or eight hours. Depends on your battery size. It depends on the state of your battery when you pull in, right?
No, no, I, I, I answer. One last question. Liability size. And I, I don't know if it's out there or not. Who's responsible if something happens to someone's car by being plugged into the system? Is it us? Is it you? Who, who's the liability fall off? Because I'm just, if someone asked that question, I said, I have no idea. I, I said, I don't even think I've ever heard of one feeling, but...
So sometimes we get that question. And people ask if they need to carry extra insurance. And we, it's just the insurance that you would normally have on the property for any kind of equipment. And we've never had a case where that has happened.
Thank you.
But I'm, I'm sure if something happened, they would sue everybody, including the charging station and the car.
Again, that was one question. I said, well, I don't really know that answer, but I mean, I...
That's never, it's, I'm not aware of any case where anything, anybody's ever been harmed by a situation.
So just to understand, you're recommending, you're recommending flipping the, the Level Two at the Civic Center and the Level Three at the Lincoln Street Lot and switching those?
Yeah, so put the Level Three at the Civic Center and put the Level Two in the front one where your power station already is. Put the Level Two up front, as shown in the diagram.
All right, so we take up the two spaces.
That's correct.
Okay.
At the front.
Okay.
I think it'll be a lot visible once you put the EV sign up. I think it'll be a lot visible, more visible there to promote people going into the cars, in my opinion. I, I, I'm just... But thank you. I, I, I'll see. Go ahead.
I think you were, you're hitting first.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I just, um, to piggyback off of, of what Julie's saying, so I, um, and I, I say this, I see two Commissioners back this. I, I have this conversation with Tom and Phil all the time, that sometimes energy folks, like everyone else, understand what energy folks are saying. And there's a big, um, there's a big growth space about energy folks explaining stuff to non-energy people as we sit here listening to you. This is a great memo, but it is not for folks who don't work in the energy field. So you guys are going on about L two and L three and like...
I apologize.
No, it's feedback for the Commissioners, right, right. So, so I think what Julie's saying, and, and again, this is Julie's world, and so she understands this. It is, I'm a health policy person. She's in the education field. He's an insurance person. We kind of get this stuff, but um, but there, there's a big education piece that I'm gonna ask for before, and, you know, I'm looking at Tom. I say this all the time, before we accept this. So, L two, L three, what the costs are. I, I love us being educational stewards. I also wanna be, you know, I, I've, I'm not, I'm not convinced yet that people are gonna come to Wakefield when they can charge at their house. We have about thirty EV cars, I think, in town. I think this is great. You know, we talk about being two highways. None of these are near ninety-three. They're all downtown. I mean, I, I think there's a conversation. And, and the bigger conversation is the, the cost of what, of what this is costing us. So I, I appreciate the gift because I know this is a lot of money. But there is a cost. And what, what is the cost to us? We are not gonna be charging whoever plugs in the full amount. Um, there's gonna be a cost to us. And I, I really want to...
Why wouldn't you be charging them the full amount of the car, of what it costs you? It's, it comes, you can charge anything you want on charge point?
Yeah. But, so we haven't discussed that. I mean, that's nowhere in the memo, right? So we haven't discussed that. So I know some places, right, like, that there is no charge. Some, some companies...
You can choose to give away, but that, that would be your choice, but you can recover your cost.
Right. So we haven't had that conversation. So I, I just feel like, A, this was really wonky and it's just a little hard to know what we're um accepting. You know, I'm looking at Dan Lieber also, who works in this field. I, I, I read this memo a couple of times and it's just, I get the location points, but even when you're talking about L two and L three, and I know there's tens of thousands of dollars difference between them. And, you know, there's no money in here. You get, there's no dollar signs. And so that's just my, my pushback and not to speak on behalf of everyone, but um, you know, I, I say this to Julie and Tom all the time that, and I work in the health field and we are better at communicating than you guys in the energy field. This is, I, I think people getting in this, this package would be like, what are we, what are you guys even talking about today? So that's my two cents.
I think that's actually one of the things that we, we don't have much information on, um, cost kind of going forward and...
So the board voted that you would go on existing rates. So it would be tied into, to the town's meters. And you would go on existing rates. And the town can choose to do whatever they want through charge point. They could charge nothing or they could charge, but to recover your full cost, again, we're donating the capital, so it's really the energy charge. That's all you're paying. To recover the energy charge, if you charge twenty cents on the Level Twos, you would more than recover your, any cost on there. And if you were to, if you were to trickle over to the power rate, which would mean we were getting very, very high usage, better than a hundred charges a month on, if you had more than a hundred charges a month on the Level Three Charger, you might trickle onto the power rate. But if that were to happen, then you would need to charge twenty-four cents. So, and you, again, you would fully recover your cost.
Twenty-four cents per?
Per kilowatt hour.
And, and that, that, that would include the administrative fees associated with the administration of this, of this program? And other third-party costs, basically, is what you're saying that, that encompasses. And I guess the other piece on that is um is snowstorm DPW not, you know, damages the, the equipment, or I guess it's equipment, right? Is it considered equipment? Or the equipment is faulty or needs repair or, or maintenance of some sort? How do those costs kind of factor into all this?
Hopefully, we put ballads around them so that we don't, um, we don't accidentally do it ourselves. However, I think we were, I mean, again, we're, we're looking to get data too. data too. So I think we'll help you keep it up and running for the, a minimum of the next year because we want to make sure we're, we're not having downtime for no reason. We'd rather make sure it's working to truly see what kind of traffic it gets.
Counselor Chines?
Sure. So, thank you very much. First of all, I, I really applaud the idea of having EV charge stations put in town. I mean, I, I think that this is part of building an infrastructure that doesn't serve just the 30 EV users in Wakefield today, but, you know, serves those of us who I hope will be EV users in the, in the future. I, I do think that this is a critical thing to do for, for the future of the town. I think it does have an, an economic development component as well. However, I, I think there are a lot of questions that, you know, I think we need to come back and, and answer. And I think we've talked a little bit about the rate structure and, you know, I appreciate the context you've given us here, but I, I think being able to see some of that information in writing and digest it and come up with a policy decision as to what the right rate to charge is, is an important next step. And I think something that we need to spend more time on. You know, Counselor Dinoco asked a little bit about time limits and enforcement, and I think that's another issue that we've got to think through from a policy standpoint. I mean, we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of months talking about parking enforcement downtown and a lot of these spots would be in those same areas. So how do we think about enforcing someone who stays over limit? What is the right appropriate limit for... I think, again, that's a question, I don't want, I don't think we should answer it today. I don't think we can answer it today, but I think that's another set of questions that we've got to think through as, as a council. Communication and signage, you know, how are we going to make sure that people know that these are here? I mean, if we're going to attract people from outside of Wakefield, you know, there's got to be some external way of publicizing what's there. How do we use the resources that are available and use some of the good work that Ms. McDonald's put together for the website? So I, I just maybe would suggest, in addition to, I think, sort of the obvious and immediate question of what's the right location and maybe soliciting some more public comment on that, I think probably between the seven of us, we each have, you know, half a dozen questions rolling around in our heads that maybe we can collect and have you come back at a future meeting to help us sort of think through in a, in a more robust way.
I do think too, there are certainly competing interests there because we are talking about parking being at a premium and now we're, and we're talking about designating some of these parking spaces for this purpose. And any sort of implementation, I think, would have to be in a pilot program, but I think we want to see what sort of utilization rates we have, for example.
Well, that's another reason to get some data for a year as well.
The challenge being, we do that for a year, we find that they're being underutilized and they are removed. You know, like, I don't, I don't...
Potentially relocated.
So I, I think we do have, it sounds like we have a lot of open questions that, underlying consensus, and, and I know that we also have certain community members, one in particular, who is an expert in, in what we're talking about here. So I think that what I'm hearing from this body is it's perhaps premature to vote on this tonight, but instead have a better understanding of, of, of where we are in terms of the, the different, I mean, if there are particular issues, I think, we've raised several, but I think even addressing those issues now, tonight, not solving them, but just flagging them would be helpful to kind of guide the discussion offline after this meeting. But I'd like to, for us to be able to determine what that looks like, what the, what the path forward looks like so that we can, you know, have a, a vote on this one way or the other in the near future. So I'm open to suggestions on that. Counselor Dinoco?
Thank you. Just three more quick questions. You said, one, how much, for 20 cents? How much power? Was one? One kilowatt?
Kilowatt hour.
One kilowatt hour. So, L2's charged at how fast?
Again, there's a, there's a...
And I'm only saying this because of time. Which one charges faster, an L2 or an L3?
L3 charges faster.
An L3 charges faster.
Right. The L3, which is the bigger, more expensive, that's 40 volts. It try, the whole idea is to charge very quickly.
Okay. And, and...
So, yeah, just for educational purposes, an L3 is a, is a 480 volt charger. The whole idea is that you get a high percentage of your vehicle charged in a very short period of time. That's why we're recommending putting that one downtown because people driving up 128 are going to look on the app and say, hey, there's a Level Three charger. I can get my vehicle recharged to almost 80% in a pretty quick period of time. I'll go into downtown Wakefield because that spot's showing open and I'm going to charge for 40 minutes and get 80% of my charge back. So that's a Level Three. A Level Two is, it's not a straight wall outlet. It's 240 volts. So it's charging anywhere from four to eight hours, you're getting a high percentage of charge, but it's not a, it's not a half hour thing. It's a, depending on, as, as Kathleen said, where you're at when you come in, you know, how much is left, how much do you need to charge, and the battery and the charging capability of your vehicle itself. So, and those, the Level Two chargers are what we're giving away to our customers that sign up. And they're also controllable. So one of the things they're getting from Wakefield Gas and Light when they get a Level Two charger is that we can move the, the usage off peak.
Thank you.
And, and...
Counselor, Smith Galvin?
And I know in discussions, David Paulson from the Light Department has offered to put together some different kind of rates, comparisons to what surrounding towns are doing, utilization, and so we can...
We have all that and I'll share. I can, I can send it to you. I can give it out or...
I, I think as we, I, I, let's come up with a definite plan for what we want to do because I don't want this to be an indefinite, but I do agree there may be kind of some, some better education.
Getting, getting back to like the Melrose example, and I do agree with you that you should probably have a strategy overall. And one of the things that's the problem in Melrose is that those are three free chargers and there's no cost whatsoever. And that's why there's three cars there all the time because rather than plug it into my house, I'm going to go three blocks away and charge it for free. So you need to charge something and you need to have some penalties if you're not doing what you're supposed to, like get out of the space.
Yeah.
All right. So I guess, we're, it's, there seems to be a consensus that we need to move this, this discussion forward. It's premature to vote tonight. Does anyone have a suggestion in terms of what that path forward should look like so that we, we can move the discussion to a point where people feel as if they're informed to make a decision on this? Counselor Chines?
Maybe just a couple of thoughts. I mean, it feels like maybe a month or so is sort of the right timeframe. I agree with Counselor Smith Galvin. We don't want to have this sit indefinitely. I don't think that's the intention, certainly not my intention. I don't think anyone here. I guess as we're talking through, I, I think there are sort of four questions and issues that I see. I think one is soliciting some more public input on the locations, maybe with some education on what an L2 versus an L3 is, as I whispered to Counselor, but I know enough to know that an L3 is more powerful based on the packet, but beyond that, I couldn't tell you anything more specific. Second issue is around sort of pricing and rate structure and maybe what some options are that, that we could look at, at a meeting. I think the third is around the enforcement question of it and how it relates to the parking enforcement strategy. What are the time limits that we want to have in place? You know, how we would view enforcing them and I'm assuming it would be part of a civil sort of infraction similar to a parking ticket, but we, we need to put that, you know, put pen to paper on that. And then I think the, the fourth piece is communication and signage. How do we sort of do this, again, in combination with our overall brand strategy and wayfinding strategy for downtown as well? Those are the four that I flagged. I don't know if there are others that people thought of, but I, I think that would help us a lot in terms of moving forward.
Counselor, but?
I, I like all of that. I actually, you know, we, we created a environmental sustainability group that you're the chair of, Julie, and I think this is a perfect topic. And I agree with everything Jonathan did. And as I said to Tom and Phil, even broader, like 30 people have EV cars, but most of us actually don't even understand the process that you have chargers that you give to folks if they have one, right? And you install it and you plug it in all night. And so, you know, it's if you're planning a long road trip and you're, you're, it's like losing gas. I mean, I think the basic of it, I think your organization and you as liaison to them could maybe do some education around that. And then also, it wasn't listed as Jonathan's thing, but Peter, just the information from other towns and, and other businesses. So it actually would be nice to know what is, I've heard about the ones at Tonos too, but they're only for people in that building. They're actually not for other folks, right?
Right, because they're in the Tonos lot.
So what public ones are, I think we tried to get that information, that there is no Level Three close to us. I think that was the point, the very generous gift, but just more concrete of that. So in terms of a, perhaps a proposal is, I'm happy to take this on, deal with these five, with the committee working together with the Light Department and any citizen input.
Why don't, why don't we have that? Why don't we just leave it as, you'll run point on this, Counselor Smith Galvin? So let's plan, yes, as you said, you're working with gas and light, working with the Sustainable Committee as well, the Environmental Committee. And any resident input can be directed to you.
Yes.
On the, the town's website, the Town Council page has all of us listed with email addresses. Counselor Smith Galvin's is right on there. And perhaps we can plan on you circling back and we'll add this to the, the next time on September 9th. And if you find you need more time, we can always push out to the meeting after that. But let's, let's do that as, as the next step forward. I know you can also speak to Mr. Lieber in the meantime as well, who has a lot of great insights as well. And I think that's probably the better.
Good.
And if any counselors have questions about this, please direct them to Counselor Smith Galvin and she can address that with the appropriate players.
Can I just, also just really want to thank the Light Department for...
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
It is tremendous. And, and our postponing it a month is by no means a...
No, it's fine.
Lack of enthusiasm for getting this, at least in my opinion.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for staying.
Thank you so much for staying so late.
All right. Item number 15 is, is the acceptance of two gifts. The first gift, 15A, is to the library. The library trustees are seeking our approval to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library. I, I entertain a motion?
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Santos, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Any questions or, or any discussion?
It looks like the money's from their last major event and thanks to all those who participated in helping with the fundraiser.
Just to be clear for folks, we may not have the packet in front of them. These are primarily the Blossoms at the BB, $28,800, and public printer supplies, paper and toner in the amount of $626 for a grand total of $29,426 acceptance. So we have, we have a, a motion and a second. We've had discussion, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The unanimous vote of seven zero. Moving on next, downtown Main Street, acceptance of a flower planter donated by Mr. Jack Polano, owner of Alano located at 364 Main Street. This is replacing a planter that was damaged and it will, I believe, be at the corner of Main and Center, I believe. Costs in, in a gift in the amount of, I believe, $200. I'll entertain a motion for acceptance.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Mayo, seconded by Counselor Dinoco. Any discussion?
Thank you, Jack.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you to everyone who's supported Blossoms at the BB, the donations of the printer and, and certainly the donation of the planter as well. Item number 16 is warrants signer. There had been discussion two meetings ago relative to warrants. I will say that I've been in touch with Mr. Mayo over the last few months about the idea of open, as open checkbook, it'd be online. So we're actually transitioning to that in the very near term, or I should say, within the next, by this fall, I believe, Mr. Mayo, we should have it up and running.
Yes.
So with that, understanding the warrant signer is still needed. Mr. Dinoco has asked that he be relieved of, of the responsibilities and I have determined that it would be best to be reassigned to Counselor Chines, whom I've spoken with and who has accepted that assignment. So with that, Counselor Chines, the next few months, if you could sign off on the warrants and obviously report to the, the council periodically with, with updates accordingly.
Yep, happy to do so.
Thank you. Item number 17 is matters not anticipated for the agendas. These would be any matters that were not anticipated within the 40th hour notice requirement. Are there any matters not anticipated? Seeing none. Item number 18 is announcements and acknowledgements. Reminder, this is your opportunity to make meaningful announcements or acknowledgements on any subject. So if anyone has one, please, Counselor Chines?
Sure. So thank you all. Be brief. I know we're closing it on hour three at this point. First of all, I just wanted to mention I had a, a good conversation with Town Administrator Mayo a week or so ago. So folks will recall in the last several meetings, there's been some discussion around tightening up our policy as it's related to license renewal applications, particularly when license renewals are delayed or we don't get either the, the license fee or the application from, from the, the applicant in a timely way. And so we had, I think, a good discussion, had some questions to run by Town Council Mullen, but I, I think hope to have sort of a proposed policy to put in front of this group in the next couple of meetings at some point. Couple of acknowledgements. Just wanted to acknowledge WCAT for the closing of the Movies by the Lake this Thursday. I know I've enjoyed a few of them and my family has as well. And I think we've been blessed by really great weather and it's just such a great community activity. It's such a great opportunity for folks to get on on Thursday night, especially with the other activities that happen in town on Thursdays in the summer, including jazz at the library. So just want to acknowledge the great work for WCAT there and appreciate their efforts. And finally, just wanted to mention to the public, I do have office hours coming up next Monday at 6 o'clock. So I'll be at the BB if anyone's interested in joining me. Thank you. Counselor Chines, anyone else?
Counselor Dinoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a few announcements to bring forward because we won't be able to prior to our next meeting. Information for the board and for those who wish to attend tomorrow, there will be, at the Public Safety Building, there will be a cer, ceremony for the promotion of Joe Anderson to Lieutenant and Matt Powers to Sergeant. I believe that starts at 9:00 AM. And they're asking that they would be put on the agenda for the 9th of September and, as an intro to the council for, for that purpose. I'm not sure if any, everyone has seen the pa, information that's been going through email regarding JJ Round dedication of the Renew Plaques. That's September 7th, with rain date of September 8. The Rounds families have extended their invitation to the council and to historic commission and bodies that we deem, you know, that we want to make sure that they're invited to that event. And August 24th coming up, of course, is Festival Italia. So I'm praying for no rain. We have a, a great day and I look forward to seeing a lot of people there and having a great time.
Thank you, Counselor Dinoco. Any other acknowledgements or, yes?
So I took place, took part in two meetings with fellow counselors along with other people that I wanted to touch base on. The first was with Steve Mayo, Paul Dinoco and myself with regard to Director, Director of Economic Development that we've all been talking about. And we had a, a very robust initial meeting talking about, looking, looking at best practices from other towns and cities, looking at job descriptions, really digging down into there are different types of economic developers. Some are more marketing, some are more planning. What do we want? So what we, our next step is to really dig into what some of these job descriptions are, what we think folks would be looking at and obviously bring it right back to the councils for tons of input, to look at what we think is the role of an economic development, Director of Economic Development for Wakefield would look like. So discussions have started. We've been bringing together material and we'll bring it back to the council in the near future. For, you know, at an initial stage, obviously, not like here's the description, but for a lot of input. Second meeting we had, and Maureen and I were talking about this, it was one of, I think, the best meetings I've had as a counselor. And I think Maureen would echo that. So we met with Officer Amy Rando, Maureen, Julie, Smith Galvin, Steve Mayo, Detective, Deputy Cal, Chief Skory and the clinician at the police department, Jennifer? Jennifer. I forget her last name. I don't have my notes. Miss Kelsey. That's exactly, yes. Something like that.
Just like it sounds.
So it was about concerns with folks downtown. And what was amazing to me is Chief Skory talking with unbelievable compassion and empathy and thoughtfulness and him saying right out of the gate, they are not breaking the law. Now, when they break the law, that's something else. But sitting on the benches, you're not breaking the law. And that his job is not to arrest these people and move them on. That's not part of what he does. Amy Ran, Officer Rando and Jennifer talked about the amount of, of folks that have substance abuse, that there's mental health issues, that the majority of them are, are residents. They are not homeless. The vast majority are our residents. And that they work with these people at such a level that I had no idea and I feel like I know what the police do. Was so impressed with how they get to know these people, how they try to get them into the services. Obviously, a lot of those services don't, a lot of folks don't want to go into the services, but they work at such a, a deep level with all these people. They know them. work at such a, a, a deep level with all these people. They know them. They understand these folks. On the other hand, there's a concern with businesses and what businesses have been, um, complaining about with some folks. Uh, what was interesting is the police have not had a lot of complaints about aggressive, um, asking for money. Are people sometimes taken aback? Probably yes. But there hasn't been a lot of complaints about these folks interacting with folks that are in better circumstances. Um, are there interactions between some of them?
Bless your.
Unfortunately, yes. But, um, he talked about, bless you, partnering with, we all talked about partnering with the library for certain things perhaps, um, when, um, to engage and, and to at least have services out there, um, partnering with council and aging in, in case we can provide services, the veteran services. Um, and I think it was really remarkable that, that the police, that they knew these folks by name. Um, and to work with the area houses to see what we can do to perhaps suggest that maybe spending all time downtown, although that is perfectly legal, but there may be other things that these folks could be doing. So, um, it was a really great meeting. And I was so impressed with our police department and their willingness to collaborate. Best practices right now in this country with cities facing it much more dire than we are is full collaboration. Um, and, and so it's a start. It was a great conversation. I've talked with the head of the Chamber of Commerce as recently as today. Um, and I think bringing in the businesses to educate them as well as to maybe what's going on, um, with some of these folks. So, stay tuned.
All right. Thank you. Any other, yes, Counselor Smith Galvin?
Um, just briefly, I spent yesterday at the Wakefield Museum. The Historical Society had its open house. It was fascinating. And some other people here in the audience were at, were there with me as well. So, I, I definitely recommend, um, that. Saw a lot of Wicker furniture, beautifully done. Um, but I wanted to, to point out, it was brought to my attention that, uh, it's the 375th anniversary of the founding of Wakefield and they are going to have a big celebration on September 28th. So, I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. Um, uh, the other, other, just two things. Um, kudos to, to WCAT for all you've been doing with, with the movies. Um, we've been long awaiting a, a ruling from the FCC about possible ongoing funding that might be threatened for community access television. That is not looking good. So, I think that's something as a town, we're going to have to start to probably, um, face and, and, and really, um, figure out. Um, and I know it was in our packet and Tom Stapleton, who has long led WCAT, um, has announced that he's retiring, but not until December. So, we have him for a long time. But I wanted to, to thank you. I know it's out public or publicly. So, thank you for, for all of that. Um, finally, Steve, I just wanted to get it on the radar. I noticed that, um, every town in Wakefield's supposed to have a complete count committee. And I think this is more Betsy. But with the census coming up, I noticed that Wakefield still hasn't been listed. And, and I just want to make sure that we're ready for the census. Particularly with all of these kind of different populations that we're talking about, I want to make sure that everybody gets counted. So, that's all I have.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Butt?
Um, just to add a couple of things. I, um, we, the town council, um, partnered with the farmer's market to have, uh, office hours at the farmer's market a couple of weeks ago. And, um, the counselors that were there, I think we stood for four straight hours. Uh, people were really engaged and people came up with some really great ideas. Um, and so we are looking at a date to do it again because there has been such, uh, popularity. So, stay tuned about that. Just some things, uh, Steve, that people have been asking about, I'll look at Jen also. Um, pickleball was mentioned, the outdoor courts, when those are going to get started. And, uh, people talking about a timeline on our website. It's something about all things we approve at town meeting, um, having a timeline about when things would get implemented, which goes to better communication. Um, and then the other thing that somebody mentioned, uh, so it was really interesting to have the Eagle Scout here earlier and talk about the forest. I think a lot of people in our town don't know we have a town forest. It seems like a lot of us didn't know about the trails there, probably hadn't gone there in a long time. Um, and so somebody had asked if we had ever, or would we consider having kind of a Friends of the Forest, like we do Friends of the Lake. And so it's just something, as we talk about, um, a part of our town that not a lot of people know about, but that is a great asset and a great natural resource, um, in addition to our lake.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo?
I, I said one thing. I want to thank the board for the confidence they showed in, uh, the, um, Joe Conway approval. I think that, that he's going to serve the town very well for many years. And, and I just wanted to also, uh, uh, thank a couple more people. I want to thank Jen for all the work she's done on the website. There was a lot of work that had to be done in the backend. And a lot of people talked about that and mentioned that. And I will say that, um, uh, we are encouraging all of the other, uh, boards and committees to, um, get their, uh, minutes and agendas up in a timely manner. There are three boards in town, or committees in town, that agendas, um, minutes, um, and membership is always up to date and always on time. And that's the town council, the, um, retirement board and the fi- and the finance committee. And the common denominator is that, uh, our clerk clerks for all three of them. And they're the only three that are up to date. And the only one that I don't think we had too much back work to do on what Sherry's put on the website. So, she has to get kudos for that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a fin- a couple of final thoughts. The, um, Public Safety Building Reassessment Committee is meeting next, uh, Wednesday, August 7th at 7:00 PM. This will be at the, at Town Hall, the first floor conference room. For that, the reminder that this Thursday is the Ice Cream Social at the Hartshorn House, which, uh, is just before the Movie on the Lake, uh, Plaza Jazz as well will be going on. Uh, I do also want to recognize Tom Stapleton. We do have you for a few more months, Tom, but you've done incredible work, um, through, through your time here in Wakefield. And the whole town owes you a great debt, um, debt of gratitude. And finally, I'd like to, uh, recognize, uh, our WCAT members tonight. We have Ryan Boyd, uh, Brianna Randaza, um, Gabby Needham, and of course, Tom Stapleton, who put this production together for us. So, thank you all for that. And with that, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Vice, seconded by, uh, Mr. May. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, meeting's closed. Goodnight, Wakefield.